Marcy Bond, I am a Parks and Recs Commissioner, but I am speaking on my own behalf tonight, and none of my opinions reflect the view of the Commission. On Saturday, I went over to the PRCS Halloween Celebration, and as I was walking through the park, I noticed that there were kids in the park, but there were also people with their dogs, a number of them unleashed. While they may be well behaved, the issue is, is that you have kids running around, and you do not know how, if a kid's going to run up to a dog, startle them, they're gonna end up biting them. This is just a dangerous situation. The dogs are not supposed to be brought into the park. They're not supposed to be unleashed in the city at all. Please, 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 keep your dogs on a leash. Do not run them in the park. We do have a dog park. One more thing to remind everybody about is that the plunge is a public pool. It is not our own personal pool. There is no such thing as my lane in a public pool, because it is for everybody to use. So if you are in a lane and you are solo and someone wants to come in and join you, be nice, smile at them, and just let them come in, and both of you will have a great time. Thank you.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Next, we have Lamar Betts, followed by the next five speakers, who are Melissa Sanders, Beth, Monica Richardson, Patrick Godinez, and Michael Copy.
All right. Hello, everyone. Hello, Council. My name is Lamar Betts. I'm the co-founder and owner of the Skate Side. We run a youth skateboarding, roller skating program here in Culver City, as well as in neighboring cities as well. And since 2015, we've taught over 10,000 students how to skate or roller skate through our program. And although we've had students that have gone on to be Olympic skateboarders for Olympic teams, we're most proud because students in our program have found a sense of self and a sense of community. And I'm here today to talk about Skate Side Fest. Skate Side Fest is our annual give-back event that we do. We had one in 2019, as well as 2024, which was our return event. And we also had one in 2025, this year in May. And thank you to the Culver City Parks Recreation, as well as the city. We were able to have a special events permit grant that was able to assist us with creating a larger impact for the event. And I am asking to agendize for a future meeting, a request for an extra $5,000, because for 2026, we want to have a two-day event. We had over 2,000 people show up for our 2025 event. We had a roller skating zone, a skateboarding, a skate park zone, and a family fun zone. This is a family fun event that our participants have come out to. We close out all of our other areas for everyone to enjoy the event. So we're asking to agendize that event for a future meeting.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Mr. Betts, you're gonna apply for the grant, right?
We've applied for the grant. We're just asking for additional $5,000, since it's a two-day event.
The special events subcommittee, Vice Mayor and I are on that. And we'll, we go through that and decide that at that level. So, and we know you're coming up.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
All right.
Next, we have Janine Wisniewski. I apologize, Melissa Sanders. You're unmuted. Go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Mike, whatever his name was, needs to realize we already spend way over $15 million on the unhoused, and he needs to find a new city to complain to. I just wanted to briefly talk about tomorrow's meeting with the police, since I will not be able to attend, since I will be on a school board meeting. I really appreciate that we have our own police department. I really appreciate that I can get to know my police department. I really appreciate that they will come if I hear a weird noise in the middle of the night and appease me. What I don't appreciate is when people want the police to be defunded. What I don't appreciate is when they think that they make purposeful and racist and other things, which I personally have never experienced. I have not met anyone who has ever experienced with our CCPD. What I do appreciate is that they probably need more staff than less staff. We are five square miles, and we, as a city, deserve to be protected, to have the best available, to make sure our kids and families are protected, to protect the people who work here, who decide to actually shop and dine and play here. Our kids go to school here. All of this is important and should be realized how important it is to have our own police department fully staffed, fully funded. Thank you.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Dear City of Culver City members, Council members, Housing is presenting an update for the rent control rules. May we ask that before any steps are made to accept these proposed changes that the city holds a meeting with property owners? Many of the proposed changes open a can of worms. For example, forbidding property owners to move in their senior parents or ailing parents to an apartment that they own. I have, personally, I have a senior parent that the doctor said in the next six months to a year will need to move closer to me. And what I'm being told by these proposed changes that the City of Culver City will not allow my parent to move closer to me, closer to UCLA and Cedars, and to leave my parent living alone at risk. That should not happen. It creates an even bigger problem. Secondly, is, another aspect is insurance for our rental is going up 300 a month come January. Car insurance has gone up 200 a month. And that doesn't count the cost of labor and other costs. So please keep that in mind when you think about rent control and making it even stricter. The other aspect is utilities. That section's very unclear. But water, the tenants need to know how to manage the water, and they do if they pay their part. Else the tubs are running freely. We've had nightmare situations. I'd be happy to share with you one-on-one. The other part is roommates. I was able to buy my place because I had roommates for many years. I had guns pulled on me. I had people bring in spousal abusers.
I'm sorry. Time's up. Thank you.
Next, we have Monica Richardson.
Hi there. I was a longtime resident of Culver City for 21 years and a homeowner still for 20 years. I own a 1950s classic house. It's 1,400 square feet. I just, I've noticed a lot of racist comments. I guess a lot of talk about gender and race with this council. I've been in Culver City a very long time. Some of the council members have been there just a few years. So it's like you've come in, and now you think you want to change Culver City or you want to criticize Culver City for how it is or what it is. We are the United States of America. We're not the United States of the Democratic Party or the United States of the Democratic Socialist Party. There are other people who have different opinions from maybe three of you. Five people here do not represent, or maybe four of you, how other people feel. So as the United States, when a lot of people want to call certain people tyrants and all this other thing, what I'm seeing in Culver City is a really, really heavy shift to the left. Left, 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 like I don't even recognize it. 1991 is when I arrived in Culver City with a newborn, and I felt safe, and I want to support the police. We don't want to defund them. I just want to say to you, every time a couple of you talk, all you talk about is gender and race. And lastly, we don't want men in the bathroom. No men in the shower and the plunge. I think you should think about how you talk when you start the meetings. Thank you.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I come to stand before you as a Culver City Housing participant. And for the sake of the public, I also sit on the Advisory Committee on Housing and Homelessness. I would like to publicly comment. The city has done an amazing job providing shelter and services to hundreds of unhoused neighbors over the years. Hats off to Director Barnes, staff, and all the providers involved. Now that the city is shifting focus to developing more affordable housing, I feel it is imperative that the city ship a portion of the department's dollars to the Culver City Housing Trust Fund, maybe a million dollars a quarter. These dollars could be replaced by programs, grants, not only to build, but also for services. For example, the LA City agreed to provide 12,915 beds by 2027, just recently. Finally, please inform the City Housing and Homelessness Consultant why we were denied a $16 million grant for Giulio Village. That way she could, or they could possibly reapply or apply that information to another larger grant with a similar project.
And lastly, we have Michael Copy.
Good evening, y'all. Back a year or so ago, when all those people over at Sawtell and Culver filed complaints with Mark Munzer, asking him to enforce the city policies, we got, we realized after a while that he was gonna do nothing. He never even sent them a form letter, never investigated the problem at all. That's with 60 de facto affidavits sitting on his desk, handwritten letters. Shortly after that, I got a phone call from an official at City Hall. It was without email, asking me if I had the time, and didn't ask me when I picked up the phone, if I had the time then. "Hi, Michael." Now, also, first name. Never talked to this guy before. "Hi, Michael. It's John Nakbar, the city manager. What can I do for you?" "I'm calling because you're upset with our planning manager, Mark Munzer." "Yeah." "But you don't understand, Michael. We like Mark. We think Mark does good. You shouldn't be upset with him. He's part of our team." Oh my God, I couldn't believe what I was hearing. This is the city manager? That's the guy who runs City Hall? I'm thinking this guy, I have to be blunt, is an idiot. That's what I'm thinking at the time. I got off the phone later on. I started laughing. My wife says, "What's, who was that?" I says, "It's the city manager. Guy's a moron." He went on. I took command of the conversation. And guys, you're getting a new city manager. Be demanding, be resolute, be cynical when you interview him. Good luck. Sincerely.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
And that was the final speaker.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion to receive and file correspondence.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember McMorn, and a second from Mayor O'Brien. May we begin voting? Councilmember Fish?
Aye. It's broken, though, so maybe someone can come fix it. Thank you.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, great. Thank you. We're onto our consent calendar. Do we have any speakers for the consent calendar?
We have seven.
Okay. Can you tell me what items?
14, 17, 4, 10, and 1.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then, colleagues, do you have any consent items you have to pull outside of those? Councilmember Fish? No? McMorn? Yeah?
C-5 and C-13.
C-5 and C-13.
Mayor?
Yeah.
I ask if you could, if I forget, pull C-10 and maybe have the speaker speak separately. I need to recuse myself from that item, and I'd like to speak as a resident on that item also, so we can pull that one, discuss everything else, and then I'll recuse myself.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Why don't we start with C-10? And then, actually, let's, let's hear all the comments first and save the C-10 item for last, and we'll have Councilmember Verre step down at that point.
Yes.
And the speakers are Crystal Alexander, Marcy Bond, Melissa Sanders, Patrick Godinez, Jacob Shaw, and Disa Lindgren.
Also, Mayor, staff would like to pull item C-11 for an update, update on information on the use of funds. And how much time?
90 seconds.
90 seconds. Thank you.
I'm not seeing her online or in the chamber, so we're gonna move on to Marcy Bond. Marcy, you're unmuted.
Thank you. Again, I am a Parks and Recs Commissioner. Anything I say is my own opinion. It does not represent the Commission. Just wanted to let you guys know I heard a bunch of screaming from my neighbors, so something's going on with the Dodgers game. Anyway, I hope it's good news for all of you Dodgers fans. So first off, I wanted to just tell you guys how excited I am about you guys getting to the point where you have an actual code change for the donor and sponsorship. I think this is very exciting. I think it's going to do wonderful things for our parks, and fingers crossed this goes through. You all vote for it, and we start getting donations so that we can actually move forward with our Parks General Plan. Knock it off. Sorry, my cats. Then I wanted to talk about the glue traps. I'm concerned about that, because a lot of people, not necessarily that I use glue traps for animals, for rats and whatnot. I would rather use the snap trap. I refuse to use the poison traps, because those, I feel like while the glue traps are inhumane, the poison traps kill a lot of other animals, including hawks and owls and all of these important predators. Whereas the rodents, they, because they are prey, they propagate very quickly. So please consider this whole thing about those, the traps that are, I know I've run my time out, but the poison traps. Please consider.
Thank you.
Next, we have Melissa Sanders.
Is she speaking on C-10? Can we save her?
I'm sorry. I'm actually picking up my keyboard. My concern is about the Overland. I think it was C-4 mainly, that I was unclear if this was something to do with the ridiculous bike lane part of Overland or if you guys are planning to do upgrades to Overland prior to trying to do the grant. Either way, please stop. If it's just to improve Overland, the pedestrian stuff, great. I hope that works. But do not do anything with a bike lane. Do not do anything that's gonna remove parking. Do not do anything that is an ADA, compliance issue. Don't do anything that's gonna make living in this area any more difficult. Just stop. So I apologize. I missed some parts of things, and I'm not quite focused at the moment. But I assume we get to speak on C-10 separately, but maybe I've mixed them up because I'm not in front of my agenda. Sorry. Good night.
Yeah, can you hold on if you're gonna speak on C-10? Hold on till the end.
Hello. I wanted to comment on C-1. I appreciate the, the list and the items for the cash distribution that you give access to the public for. You know, if it's possible, if you could put it into departments and categories, you know, as opposed to one long list, I think that'd be helpful for the public to really understand the spending that's going on. Thank you.
And next, we have Jacob Shaw.
Good evening, Council. My name's Jacob Shaw. I'm here on behalf of People for the Ethical Treatment of Animals. And I just wanted to thank you so much for taking on this glue trap ban. Just to briefly address what one of the previous speakers said, in case there was any confusion about this. Glue traps actually do catch an enormous number of animals beyond just mice and rats. There's a group called Wild One, or rather, a data aggregation center called Wild One that's run by the Wildlife Center of Virginia that keeps track of glue trap intake from animal hospitals and wildlife rehabilitators around the country. And over the last 10 years, they've received reports of 180 different species being caught in glue traps. So the number of actual animals is in the hundreds of thousands, if not millions. So I really just wanted to thank you so, so much for banning these traps. They really are torture devices. It's the reason every animal advocacy organization, you know, every environmental organization supports banning these traps. So one day, people are gonna think, how did we ever tolerate these traps being sold and used? And they will always look back and know that Culver City was one of the first to act and do the right thing for animals and for all of us. So thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
That's it?
Okay. Are we gonna bring back Ms. Sanders to talk? Okay. Councilmember Verre, you can step out.
You wanna vote on all the other ones, or?
I think we, okay, yeah. So let's go ahead and poll it.
Do you want an update for item C-11 from staff?
Yeah. So let's save C-10 for last. Okay. So we're starting with C-1. These are the ones we're commenting on. And then, Vice Mayor Prusa wanted C-5, and what was the other one?
C-13.
And C-13. And then, do we need to poll any of the others for anyone? No? Okay. Councilmember Verre, you're gonna want C-10 polled and so you could speak on it as a member of the public. Okay. So we have C-5, C-11, C-13, and then we'll do C-10 at the end.
Are we C-1 or C-5?
I think we're gonna do C-5.
I will just say that for the disbursement list, there's, that's a standard list that we prepare in the Finance Department for all the checks that are cut. Checks can be found on the ClearGov portal, the transparency portal. And I'll make sure with staff that we clearly point to that. But I believe that you can download that into Excel and then sort those items. So.
Thank you for that.
And in regards to C-5, I'll take any questions. This is our quarterly report on the Measure CC and C Sales Tax Reports. Again, because our information comes delayed through the state, the report that is a part of this item is for the third quarter of the fiscal year. So it is January through April, or through March, actually. And the real property transfer tax is the other piece of this, and that is for the final quarter of the prior fiscal year.
Do you have any questions?
Great. A couple of questions. Will there be any forecasts that will include? We're expecting thousands of residents to come into the city. Will there be any forecasts that will include that information?
So that is difficult to address. I mean, there's, and are you thinking that that is related to the revenue that they will potentially generate? There's also going to be costs associated with them. When the general plan was brought forward, there was a financial report that a consultant prepared, specifically related to the full build-out anticipated in 2045 that talked about potential revenues and costs. It wasn't broken down, obviously, in a shorter term. You know, our forecast is only looking 10 years. We can look at those numbers and try to see what we can bring into the 10-year forecast. We're working on that right now. We're waiting to close the fiscal year. We're working with our auditors currently, and we hope to bring that forecast back to the council when we talk about the contingency reserve. And we're hoping to do that in January. That way, we'll have all the data from the prior fiscal year. And that included. Additionally, we will include, now that Measure CL has passed and we have an additional quarter sent, it's looking likely, although we don't have complete confirmation from CD-TFA, but that the quarter sent is likely to start this January. So we will get half a year, and we will include that as well.
And that, the Measure CL will be included with all these other reports? And then, just on that note, I know that reports could be coming, that 10-year forecast, but with the structural deficit, with this new Measure CL, and with the possible offlining of the Wellness Village in '27-ish, how will that, when will we expect our structural deficit to, you know, level out?
So I, based on the budget forecast, the adopted budget, we can see that probably it starts to decrease certainly in fiscal year '27, '28, because that was when Wellness Village is slated to go offline. And also, then we will be receiving the additional tax, sales tax revenue. And so probably, again, not having done a full analysis, what it looks like is in that fiscal year '29, '30, and '30, '31, things get to even.
Right.
Again, all things being equal, and we don't know what else will happen.
Yep. Okay. Thank you. That's it, Mayor.
One additional question on this one. Thank you for pulling it, Vice Mayor, and thanks for the report CFO sobered. The sales tax revenues, I asked if they had been inflation-adjusted, the 10-year, and you said no, and it doesn't say it was, so that makes sense. Can we see that going forward? Because I was noticing that over 10 years, it's up, but then over the last four years, it's down, our sales tax revenues. So I was just wondering, like, I want to be able to know in that, I think it would be helpful for us to know in that glance, like, if it's, if the value of the money is actually decreasing, if that makes sense, or if, what inflation, you know, changes that view, I guess. Is that easy to do?
I can ask the consultant. I'm not sure. But I will say, and then they did on the, that third attachment, the dotted red line sort of is looking at what would be normal based on, a normal projection on where you think you would land. Of course, every quarter is different, right? The spikes in that graph are the December holiday quarter, which is typically when sales tax is at its greatest. And other dips are, you know, sales tax is at its greatest, and other dips are, you know, the January, February, March quarter tends to be low, because people basically spent a lot of money for the holidays and then really tightened their belts in the beginning of the year. And you can see that the graph really does do that. I'll see about the inflation. I will just say about the last four years, there was a tremendous spike that happened coming out of the pandemic. Everybody had stimulus money in their pockets. They were spending on things in a way that they hadn't spent. They batten down the hatches, and then they started... They really started spending, and so the increases that you see there are because of that. And then, as things started to even out and open up, people started paying for experiences more, right? Like, they went out and did things that they hadn't been able to do. We don't get sales tax on those services. We get sales tax on goods. And so, when they stopped buying actual products and paid more for experience, that has affected our sales tax. So, a lot of things in the works there, and certainly, the kind of the ups and downs of the economy recently haven't helped either. People are... And tariffs, and there's a lot, but this sort of is predicted, that it was kind of course correcting, and we'll see what happens. We're cautiously optimistic for just very measured growth moving forward, but we'll see.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to know if, like, the increases that we're seeing, or the decreases, were taking that into account, in case, yeah, in case that is another clue. Thank you.
Okay.
And, I mean, to piggyback on that, isn't inflation essentially accounted for when you're looking at projecting costs, you know, our expenditures? I mean, we're... Those are... You're projecting...
Yeah.
Yeah, that's how it's...
In our costs, we do include that. We do... We include it in our forecast, some measure of inflation, both on revenues and expenditures. We look at, you know, our model looks at history, but it also, we can adjust it based on things that we know are happening.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, this one was just about the 10 years prior, not the forecast.
Yes.
But, yeah.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Next is C11.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. For the sake of the public, my name is Tevis Barnes. I am the Housing and Human Services Director. Staff has requested that this item be pulled based upon information that we learned from the County of Los Angeles. I want to thank council members McMoran and Fish for meeting with staff as part of the Standing Housing and Homelessness Subcommittee to discuss how to utilize the funds of $257,108 that we received from the County of Los Angeles Affordable Housing and Solucent Agency, or LACASA. The Subcommittee has recommended that 20% of the funds go for legal services, which is an allowed expense, and that 20% will be used to supplement the contract with Beth Setic and to work with tenants who are experiencing an unlawful detainer. The Subcommittee also had recommended that the 40% for rental assistance, that half of those funds are 50, approximately $51,000, be used for emergency rental assistance and flexible financial assistance. They have also recommended that the additional other 50% go towards temporary rental assistance for folks as defined under the program. And the program defines households that are experiencing a loss of employment, a natural disaster, an unlawful retainer, unexpected events that causes folks that are housed. These funds can only be used for folks that are housed, to keep folks in housing. An additional 40% can be used at the discretion of the council. So, the Subcommittee instructed staff that 50% would be used for financial assistance for households impacted by immigration enforcement. And they wanted the balance of $52,000 to support the city's Housing Trust Fund. The county has informed us that we cannot use funds to support the Housing Trust Fund. You can only use funds for direct client assistance, and they want the funds that are available to hit the streets as fast as possible. So, staff, one, wanted to inform the body that the county does not allow the use of funds for the Housing Trust Funds, and we would like to seek direction from the council of the balance of the $52,000. How would the council like to utilize those funds?
Thank you for that. I would like to request that it goes into our rental assistance program. That's an area of need, is it not, Director Barnes?
You know I'm not going to disagree with that, yes. And I think the Subcommittee was very thoughtful in their deliberations, and under the rental assistance program, they would like to give one month's of rental assistance, which is $3,500, which is a good chunk, to assist folks, and it's a one-time. But then, we... There also is a second component where they will give rental assistance of $1,000 per month per adult for up to six months. So, staff would just needs to know which pocket do you want to put that in, the one time for $3,500, or the $1,000 per month per adult for up to six months?
I'd like to ask the opinion of the Subcommittee members on that.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm happy with that. I'm wondering if we can maybe split that between the program that specifically serves our immigration, our families targeted by immigration enforcement, and then our main program for the emergency rental, as Director Barnes is saying, and the temporary rental assistance. Maybe we could do, like, half and half? I don't know. What does my colleague on the committee think? Councilmember McMoran?
Thank you, Director Barnes. You and your entire team for your quick action and due diligence in getting back to us on the update on what the permissible use of the funds would be. As it pertains to what we should do with this new information, I would be in favor of sort of splitting it between the two programs that we've identified. Again, as I sort of always say, just kind of seeing where the need is as needs come in, maybe we can make adjustments. I know we said we would check back in as a Subcommittee as things were progressing, and we were noticing, you know, where the needs in our community are, and just hopefully we can be nimble and flexible and really support our neighbors and remaining housed in Culver City, which I know is the goal of everyone here in the DIA. So, maybe for now, we split, and again, just try to be data-driven as we move forward. Thank you.
Okay. To that end, could it be used as almost like a contingency bucket for these three separate... It's almost like we have three, because they have the emergency rental and flexible financial assistance, the temporary rental assistance, and then the immigration, the families targeted by immigration enforcement? Is there, like, could we have this as sort of, like, council members saying, like, as sort of a bucket that could fill where the need is the most between those three?
The council can give staff that direction. And if I am understanding you correctly, if we're noticing that more folks are in need of the one-time rental assistance versus, say, the, you know, folks impacted by immigration enforcement, that we would then rely upon that additional money to assist those folks. But if we notice that it's trending in that way, we would convene the Subcommittee to let you know what's happening and to see what direction you want us to go, and if you want us to come back to the full body.
I'm okay with that, if everyone else is.
Yes.
Okay. Directions clear?
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, great. There's no further questions on that item. C13, and then, we'll do... We'll vote on those with minus C10.
I don't need a staff report. I'm just curious, how many grants have been made, and how many participants have obtained housing and remained in housing, and what happens if participants leave before one year?
So, for the public, again, this is Tevis Barnes, Housing and Human Services Director. Vice Mayor Puzza is asking with regards to the... It's called the Permanent Local Housing Allocation Program, or PLHA. We have been awarded Year Three, Four, and Five. Similar to our previous discussion, this money is prescribed for certain eligible activities. Under Year Three, council gave direction that we would utilize our funds as rental assistance for folks transitioning out of our interim housing program. So, part of the recommendation is that we continue to use Years Four and Five for folks transitioning out of our program. For Year Three, we are currently still in the process of developing our by-name list, meaning that folks, we believe, could benefit from this program. Now, please understand, this is temporary rental assistance. So, we really need to work with households that can live independently, and once the funds are removed or moved away or reduced, that they are able to maintain that housing without that assistance, because we don't want anyone to fall back into homelessness. So, currently, we are identifying households that we believe could thrive in a situation living this independent. And we're also using funds to provide additional years of rental assistance. The first iteration was just only one year of rental assistance, which most of us realize that's not enough. And so, with... We went to the county and said, hey, can we get more money? And they agreed. So, now, we will be able to provide folks with up to three years of rental assistance to help them transition, to be able to pay the rent on their own, or hopefully, maybe find another resource such as a Section 8 housing voucher. So, currently, we have six folks on our by-name list. We are working with them and getting them prepped and ready to be able to live in an apartment on their own, and of course, working with them with life skills and money management, so that way, when they make the transition, that they are strong and well-suited to do so.
Great.
And then, you did ask, what happens if they don't stay for a year? We will just move to the next person on the by-name list, who's ready to go.
Got it. Thank you, and thanks for going over the program and background. So, tonight, am I correct that we talked about three rental assistance programs? Three different?
Yes, we have. So, we have one rental assistance for the unhoused, and that's the PLHA program. And then, we discussed two rental assistance programs through the... And I'm sorry to do this to the public, there's just a lot of alphabets. The... What is it? The R8... Okay, even I am having difficulty here. It is the Rental Housing Homeless Prevention Program. The difference between the one, the two programs, one is for folks who are housed, to keep them in their housing, and the other one is for folks who are unhoused, to get them into housing. So, the PLHA is for the unhoused, to get them into permanent housing, and then the other two programs are folks who are already housed, to keep them maintained in their housing, because they were dealing with some type of crisis. So, we are dealing with three different programs.
Great. Thank you, Director Barnes. And just for clarification for members of the public, because I think there's some confusion that we don't provide rental assistance programs anymore. They've been eliminated, so I just want to make sure that the public knows that the city is still providing those very important programs. Thank you.
And don't forget, we also still have our Section 8 rental assistance program. We're still working with that program as well on the federal side.
Oh, great. Thank you for that addition. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So, with that, thank you, Director Barnes. Let's go ahead and vote on Consent Items C1 through 17 while pulling out C10.
I have a motion by Councilmember Vera, a second by Mayor O'Brien to approve the consent calendar, Item C1 through C9, and C11 through C17. May begin voting?
Yeah, I can... I still can't vote or make motions, but I vote aye.
Aye. Thank you, Councilmember Fish.
Maybe if we can get JR or someone, Johnny, here.
That motion passes unanimously.
Okay. And for the public, Councilmember Vera is going to step into the back because he has a perceived conflict of interest on C10, and once the staff report is complete and any further public comment or comments from the DIA's are over, he is going to be called out to speak on the item as a member of the public. Dr. Chang?
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. This is Diana Chang, City's Chief Transportation Officer. We're here tonight to recommend the City Council to approve the guiding principles for the Sepulveda Connect project, to authorize acceptance of grant funds for the Metro Measure M Suburbanial Equity Program in the amounts stated on the staff report, and approve a related budget amendment to appropriate the grant funds to the project. We also have a presentation available to introduce the project and walk through the guiding principles, if the council would like a presentation.
Yes, please.
Thank you. So, if you can... Next slide, please. Sepulveda Connect is a mobility project that envisions a corridor where everyone can move better, safely, comfortably, and reliably, and finds opportunity to improve people's experience along the corridor. This project is a community-centered design effort that will lead to the construction of low-cost, meaningful improvements that benefit transit riders and other street users. Next slide. We're focused on Sepulveda because it's critical mobility corridor for Culver City and neighboring West Side communities, serving many important regional destinations such as LAX and UCLA, and many local neighborhood services and businesses. Our general plan identifies Sepulveda as a transit priority corridor, a place where we prioritize improvements to our streets and signals to make buses operate more reliably and to make the customer access and waiting experience safer and more enjoyable. As with all our capital projects, Sepulveda Connect will look to improve the experience and reliability for people traveling by all modes. Next slide. The Complete Streets Design Standard establishes a set of street design elements that must be included, when budget allows, in all city roadway projects, with the goal of incrementally making our streets more complete. Sepulveda Connect is a transit priority project at its core, but staff will look to include other design elements from the Complete Street Design Standards when it's financially feasible to do so. Next slide. Funding for this project comes in part from the West Side City's Council of Government, which has dedicated Measure M funds to build bus priority on three key corridors, including Sepulveda Boulevard. The West Side COGS, supported by our staff, will be designing and implementing quick-bill bus lanes on the segment of Sepulveda, north and south of Culver City. In combination with our project, these improvements will shape a meaningful transit priority corridor that supports our highest ridership bus line, bus line, and an important corridor for the LA or 2028 games. Next slide. The project team has been working during the first three quarters of 2025 to develop a clear understanding of baseline conditions in the corridor, including developing analysis tools that will be used to model traffic and transit outcomes from various design scenarios to be developed during next phases of the project. In October, we launched our engagement process with our first CPAC, or what we call Community Project Advisory Committee, and door-to-door visits with corridor businesses. We're scheduled to hold our first public design workshop starting in mid-November. These will support a community-centered design process that will continue through the first quarter of 2026. We will return to the City Council at that time with design alternatives for direction. Our scheduled target construction date will be in late 2026, with an opening anticipated in 2027. Next slide. So, in effort to ensure a smooth design process, the draft guiding principles have been developed to guide our work with community stakeholders, leading to solutions that meet community goals. The following guiding principles reflect city's goals codified in the general plan and will be used to ensure project design activities uphold the city's commitment and will be used to ensure project design activities uphold the City's commitment to meeting these community-crafted goals. These are similar to the design guidelines we had for the downtown corridor. They lay out what the project is and what it isn't, and help to resolve issues that come up during design, and make sure that everything we're doing is fulfilling the project's mission. Next slide. With a limited budget, we will have to prioritize street improvements that best align with our general plan policies and mobility needs. Our guiding principles are organized to help inform project development and decision-making. General plan policies and user needs dictate that transit improvements are the core of Sepulveda Connects. As we plan for these improvements, the team will seek to make travel more reliable for all road users and fulfill the intent of the Bike and Pedestrian Action Plan by creating additional connections within the bike network. These are other critical mobility principles. Anytime we make transportation investments, it presents an opportunity to improve our community for kids walking to school, people accessing local businesses, and those who spend time on the corridor and in adjacent neighborhoods. Finally, our design will aim to balance cost-effectiveness with quality and permanence, and I'll go into a little bit in the future slides. Next slide. The core intent of Sepulveda Connects is to build transit priority infrastructure on Sepulveda to speed up buses and help them stay on schedule. These improvements will be coordinated with recommendations from Culver City Your Way to enhance service levels. For those of you who are not familiar, Culver City Your Way is another initiative that's aimed at creating a holistic mobility services plan, which in coordination with the infrastructure improvements, will help to create more convenient options for people to travel in their daily lives. We're using a data-driven approach to build bus lanes where delay is more impactful to customers. This will allow us to consider other types of improvements where bus travel is and is projected to remain reliable. Next slide. As mentioned earlier, Sepulveda is the busiest transit corridor served by Culver City Bus. The Line 6 Rapid 6 carries approximately 6,800 riders per day, which is about 55% of our system bus ridership. This is also a key corridor for the Olympics, connecting key destinations and metro rail. Bus riders in the corridor are impacted daily by traffic-related delay and poor reliability. Next slide. Building our network of all ages and abilities cycling facilities is essential to meet our general plan goals and meeting the intent of the BPAP. Sepulveda is identified as a north-south cycling corridor in the Bike and Pedestrian Action Plan, and Sepulveda Connects will evaluate options to build out a north-south facility and improve network connectivity. Our existing conditions analysis identified that there are high-traffic volumes, particularly with turning movements, complex intersections, vehicle speeds, and multiple freeway on-ramps and off-ramps on portions of the corridor that are consistent with the highest level of cycling stress. With these conditions, National Design Guidance calls for the highest level of protection on corridor and at intersections. Given these findings, our guiding principles provide direction to look at both on-corridor and parallel corridor cycling facilities. It would be most prudent to locate bike lanes on Sepulveda where traffic volume and turning movements permit building a high-comfort, low-stress facility, and the lanes will close a gap in the existing or near-future bike network, whether it's planned or for planned and funded network. Next slide. The real strength of bike infrastructure isn't in any particular corridor, it's in the network as a whole. A network of protected bike lanes means more people are connected to more destinations. Our approach will be identify, to identify the set of investments that best contribute to a comprehensive, all-ages-and-abilities network. Next slide. We want people to experience predictable and reliable travel on Sepulveda, whether they're riding the bus, driving, walking, or riding the bike. Here's why we are focusing on reliability. When people have bad travel experiences, it's often because a trip takes longer than expected, because the bus is late, or because the car or bus is delayed in traffic. It's what sticks out in their memory as a poor experience. In a growing region, we can't expect to reduce traffic demand, but we can provide reliable travel for people, making sustainable transit and cycling more attractive options. And tools that make transit and cycling more predictable, reliable, and safe can also help to improve travel reliability for people driving and delivering goods, and can encourage context-appropriate travel speed, improving safety for all. Next slide. The project will be addressing the corridor holistically, ensuring that improvements made on Sepulveda don't have negative outcomes for adjacent neighborhoods. The team will analyze potential impacts, coordinating with the tri-school area traffic study, and consider traffic calming measures that address current and future cut-through traffic. Next slide. The project will seek to improve neighborhood connectivity through targeted pedestrian improvements. This will include adding features to help calm traffic, reduce pedestrian crossing distances, and create a welcoming and accessible environment to shop, stroll, or wait for the bus. Next slide. We have heard a strong desire from the CPAC members and business stakeholders for investments that improve the public realm along the corridor. The project will look for tactical opportunities to improve the quality of public spaces on Sepulveda Boulevard and improve conditions for people accessing businesses and transit services. Next slide. Sepulveda is home to many small and local businesses that rely on access by all modes. Our team has surveyed parking usage along the corridor and on intersecting streets, and we use this data to inform design decisions and identify locations that require mitigations for potential loss of on-street parking spaces. While we know, while we know many customers ride by car, this project is an opportunity to make Sepulveda a safer and more comfortable space, place to access businesses and services on foot or other sustainable modes. Next slide. It will be important for this project to balance the use of permanent materials that are appropriate for this heavily-used corridor with the opportunity to make meaningful improvements within our bu, project budget. Our goal is to install permanent infrastructure whenever possible and to use quick-build materials only in limited circumstances, where needed, to meet time and budget constraints. Next slide. So this concludes my presentation, and we're staff, as well as project consultant, are available for any questions.
Thank you. That was great. Do we still have a member of the public who wants to speak on this?
Yes, we had three speakers sign up for this.
Okay. Can we hear from them, please? Ninety seconds each?
So we have Melissa Sanders, Desa Lindgren, and Albert Vera. Melissa Sanders is online. Melissa, I've unmuted you. You can unmute yourself. Go ahead.
Hi again. I actually may defer to Albert since he is a business owner there, and I would like one of our priorities to start being our businesses. I didn't know he was going to speak, so this is totally off the cuff. Whatever is done in this city needs to be thoughtful and respectful of everyone, but especially our businesses, because without our businesses, we don't have a city. So the exhausting list of places that have closed over the past few years is mind-boggling. We all know MOVE was a massive failure. It is still a problem. So anything that will make car travel more difficult, create less parking and less access for people, should be a non-starter at this point. I have a new boss who has no idea that I am involved with city politics at all, and he complains about having to travel through Culver City still, even though it's improved. So please think about that. Think about the people who do travel in cars, who are the majority of the people who will shop, eat, play, drink, et cetera, in Culver City. So thank you.
Our next speaker is Desa Lindgren.
Good evening, Mayor O'Brien, Vice Mayor Puzin, members of the City Council. My name is Desa Lindgren, and I just, speaking this evening as a member of Bike Culver City. Bike Culver City did send a letter to all of you, but it was sent perhaps too late for all of you to get to see, and I just wanted to share some highlights. The first thing is that Bike Culver City is really thrilled that the city is, is beginning the process for Sepulveda Connects. It's, as you know, Sepulveda is frequently utilized as an alternative to the 405, particularly during rush hour. So everything that can be done to improve things on Sepulveda will be a really great benefit to all users of that street, including those who are pedestrians, people ride bikes, and those who use alternative transit like the bus. We want to make sure that the plans reflect our understanding of the changes that can be expected with the passage of SB 79. There is very likely to be more housing on Sepulveda in the future, so making it possible for people to live there and not be totally car-dependent would be extremely positive. It's very helpful to have had the excellent presentation by Diana Chang, and her department has done amazing work, and we look forward to the ongoing process for providing input. We do really want to stress the importance of including safety as one of the guiding principles, sustainability and equity.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Albert, did you want to come back out and speak on that? Albert Vera, come on out? Come on down.
I wanted to stay back there. Evening, Council. Thank you so much for hearing my voice as a business owner on Sepulveda Boulevard. I'm extremely worried about this project moving forward with the elimination of parking. As a business owner, I did a survey about a week ago and determined at least 45% of my customers park on Sepulveda Boulevard. The loss of revenue would be a terrible loss to me, as well as every other business on Sepulveda. I'd like the city to take a look at seeing the revenue loss, not only in the tax dollars from the businesses, but also revenue loss in terms of the parking meters and how that would affect the city overall monetarily. Bike infrastructure is great, but if, where possible, we can do it off Sepulveda, maybe on some of the side streets, but really to ensure that the business voices are heard and we have meaningful conversation, and some of these issues are really addressed in a meaningful manner. Like I said, parking is vital to the success and longevity of any business, so really be cautious about how we move forward with parking. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the end of our speakers.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from my colleagues or questions for Director Chang? Councilmember Fish?
Thank you, and thank you so much for the fantastic presentation, Director Chang. It's clear how much thought has already gone into this project and the need for this before the Olympics is so clear. And so just thank you for doing everything you can to make it a reality. Like Director Chang mentioned, you know, this being a $100 million, $100 million coming from Measure M, this is a regional priority of the West Side COG, and this is Culver City Bus's most popular route from Fox Hills to UCLA. I took it for two years to get to, to my program at UCLA. It is so crowded, and, you know, that bus was stopping for, you know, in traffic all, you know, my entire ride up there. It was not a super pleasant experience, and yet it's 55% of our Culver City ridership. I appreciate you sharing that, Director Chang. It's really helpful to know. So, yeah, you know, I appreciate the, the letter that we received from advocates in our community who are just concerned about, or, you know, I think, I really appreciate the proposed guiding principles and especially the revised version that was sent, I think, on Friday. And I'm just curious if, you know, some of their concerns were that safety as a, as a concept wasn't one of them, and I'm wondering if we can, if these principles are something that this council could give direction to just incorporate safety as a guiding principle, considering that traffic violence is the number-one cause of death for, for children in LA County, ages five to 14, according to the LA County Coroner. Is that, is that something that, Director Chang, that these guiding principles, could they be amended to add safety as a, as a guiding principle? And I do, again, appreciate, so appreciate what we do have here, because I think it's really strong, but I'm hearing that from, from community members.
Thank you. And, and I want to clarify that these are guiding principles that will help us with the design, and these are actually not the way that, it's, it's different than when we see goals of a project, right? And so the way that, my understanding is that the safety is in every project that we do, and so it's more like a goal, but it's not a designed guideline in that sense. So, but if the council wants us to amend it, we can certainly amend it. It's just not quite the intent of the guiding principle. Again, it's, 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 safety is everything that we do here. Every time we implement a capital project, whether it's, you know, street restriping or, you know, any kind of project that touched the roadway, we do have a Vision Zero policy and Complete Street Design Standards that actually focus a lot on the safety of things and that we actually follow. And so that's something that we're, I wanted to make sure that we're, I'm distinguishing the difference between the, the goal as well as in this guiding principle.
Thank you for that. Yeah, I, I, I'm really happy to hear that it's a, you know, a, a goal of every project that we work on. I mean, that's, that's evident just by the, the project that we just unveiled on, on Robertson. The section, the majority of it that's in Culver City is really protected, concrete-protected, and even separated bikeway at one point. And then when you see the LA portion, they have a different set of standards, and the protection is much softer, less fortified, and just less secure and less comfortable for people. So I think there's, for me, there's a really wide range of, of what a protected facility, bike lane, or what a bus lane could be. There's so many examples of different types of facilities, so that's why I think it's important that this document, even if it's just setting up, you know, it doesn't sound like this is blocking any, any work or anything that we need to do, but if it's, if it's here to set up, you know, what we envision this project being, I think safety should at least be a core principle. And then I also heard, I heard it from this letter that, you know, equity, sustainability, that those be included, and I'm, I'm supportive of that as well. I'm supportive of adding, the, the planned, or the guiding principles do reference the BPAP, which is great, but it would, I think it would be great, considering how much time and effort went into the Complete Streets Guidelines, if it could reference that as well. That was another ask from, from our community, was just referencing the work that went into developing those guidelines by saying, this project is intended to, you know, continue, essentially abide by the Complete Streets Guidelines that were developed. So those are the suggestions, colleagues, that I'd love to make to this document. I don't, don't intend to, to hold this up, so I would hope that that maybe wouldn't need to come back for approval. If we could just give direction to approve it with those amendments to prioritize those or to add those guiding principles, would love to hear your thoughts on that.
Councilmember Morgan?
Thank you. I wasn't planning to speak primarily just because I'm excited that this item is finally here before us, and really appreciate all the work the CTO Chang and your entire team have been collaborating, leading, and developing to bring us to this moment, so deep appreciation for that. As it pertains to the additions that Councilmember Fish lifted up, safety, sustainability, equity, where did you see those falling in the actual principles list? Would that be under community, or I assume safety would be under design?
I would actually suggest that we have it under a new section called Policy. So I think that would be a more appropriate place for these.
So I, that feels a little, just, a bit disoriented to have a separate one. So, I, that feels a little, a bit disoriented to have a separate one. Is it just to make the distinction that the council suggested it, so?
No, not to make a distinction, but I think that because some of these would kind of, it's kind of a catch-all for policies, whereas some of the policy may apply across different categories, so it's easier to capture them in one bucket.
Thank you for clarifying, CTO Chang. So, would you see it coming first on the list, before Core? Or am I, am I looking at the right list? My, I have Core, Mobility, Community, and Design for all eight. Is that the right list?
Yep.
Yes.
So, Policy would come before or last on the list?
I, I would suggest that it comes before.
Before.
Because it's the big picture, then because these guiding principles are focused on the design intent.
Okay.
Right, so they're lower level, they're more tactical in terms of the project.
Okay. Okay, so we'll go with that. I'm open to those suggestions and excited to move this work forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Pusa.
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation. Thank you so much for the communication and the outreach that the Transportation Department does. I've seen some of these presentations, and I just really appreciate all that you're doing in that regard. I also appreciate the comment about, we're never going to, I think you said something about, you know, "We're never going to eliminate traffic, but we can provide reliable transportation," and I think that's true. I don't think anyone is saying that we're ever going to fully eliminate traffic, but we can improve things, especially on Sepulveda. The other thing, a lot of times people who say they are for mobility projects, or, or they may be against increased density because of bus reliability, because there isn't, and so I know in the staff report, it says that buses are, 20% of our trips are running late. So, here we have a project that could address that issue. We have a solution, so things can be working in the right order, and things are aligning, so I'm just very excited about this. I do have one question, but before I get to that question, I agree with the proposed amendments suggested by Councilmember Fish. And then, is, is it only going to be on Sepulveda, or will there be possibility of, you know, going on to some side streets, or is it just all be one straight shot on Sepulveda?
So, in terms of the bicycle facilities, we're looking at both Sepulveda as well as some of the parallel streets.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Thanks to all the commentators, including our colleague from the DIES, Councilmember Vera. It's good to hear from, you know, people who experience transit on Sepulveda, you know, obviously from those in the bike and the, and the public transportation perspective, but also from the standpoint of the business owners along there. And I, because of where I live in Bets Park, I frequent many of the businesses along Sepulveda, basically from the creek all the way to Venice, and street parking, I know, is a challenge. Many of the, the businesses there only have one, two, or three onsite parking spots, so they're very dependent on, on-street parking for their business survival. And another consideration that I think should be, so it is being addressed, or it's being acknowledged in the community section, to use parking occupancy data to inform design process and provide parking solutions where they are needed most, and to consider options to mitigate on-street parking removal. There's also a consideration that isn't looked at here, and it is ADA. And it's, I've been hobbling around on crutches for the past three and a half weeks, and, and I do know that a frustration with folks who do have a disability, when there's a bike or bus facility that separates their vehicle from the curb, or makes, or, or if parking is completely eliminated, then, you know, some people can, I know my parents, for example, they can't walk more than, you know, 50 feet. So, what do they do? You know, it's easy to say, "Well, they can just park on the side street," you know, but if there's, we need to really consider ADA. So, I would appreciate, and I don't know if this, you know, I want to be cognizant of the comments you made, Director Chang, about, you know, goals versus principles, but if we can include under number seven, acknowledgement and consideration for ADA accessibility, I think it's really important. My colleagues are minimal to that. And I, I'm okay with the requested amendments or additions to the guiding principles.
And I'll add my support to that suggestion. I was just curious, Director Chang, will, when this comes, when, when the design comes back, will there be options for the council to review with sort of, yeah, just different options that prioritize these principles, I guess, in different ways?
Right, and we do plan on bringing back more than one designing options to the City Council for direction.
Okay, thank you so much.
And before we vote on this, I do want to really commend you, Director Chang, and your entire team. Culver City is one of four members, well, technically five, six, if you include our neighbors in LA and LA County, but along with Beverly Hills and Santa Monica and West Hollywood, and our, our projects are, were, I think, put in front because of, I think, the great work of our Transportation Department, where we were the most ready, and so we were awarded, so I appreciate that. So, may I have a motion?
Mayor, before you take a motion?
Yeah.
Because you're approving a document that's very specific, I just want to make sure Director Chang has enough information to articulate the additions to the, to the guiding principles document, and make sure council's comfortable with her taking those ideas and formulating the language. If not, we probably should have her read the language into the record and make sure the council's comfortable with it. So, but we need to do one or the other. We need to either have council approve the exact language, or give her, you know, the discretion to formulate it consistent with council's input.
I feel we're clear on, and colleagues can jump in, but it was clearly expressed that under a new policy category, which goes at the top for Core, addresses the safety comment, and then I, and then I'm asking to add consideration for ADA under the maintained business access, or it could actually go under enhanced public space. Where I trust you'll put it in the right place in there, under community. I wasn't sure if I really heard where the Complete Streets would go.
Yeah, I didn't want to be too prescriptive on that one, but just wherever it makes sense, because it does, it does reference the BPAP, so maybe under Mobility, since it references the, meet the intent of the BPAP, maybe that would be a natural place to say and follow, you know, the, the standards set forth in the Complete Streets Guidelines. And then along with what the mayor said, just wanted to reiterate that the other asks from community members, specifically by Culver City, was the, was incorporating equity and sustainability as a, as a tenant or a guiding principle, and that can be in that top section, and then, yeah, that was it.
Okay.
Does that, and I'm comfortable with it not coming back, if my colleagues, as well. Okay.
Is that clear? Okay, wonderful. Okay, may I have a motion? And a second?
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Fish, a second from Councilmember McMoRan, to approve this item as amended. May begin voting.
All members have voted, and that passes four ayes with one recusal from Councilmember Vera.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Vera, you can come on back. And we're going to move on to public hearing, item number one. All right, so I got a new one here. I'm going to announce that this is the time and place for the hearing of protests or objections to the continuation of the downtown Culver City Business Improvement District.
The resolution of intention was published on October 16th, 2025, as required by the Streets and Highways Code.
Okay. I have a brief staff report.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Luis Gonzalez. I am the city's project manager in economic development. For your consideration, this evening is item H1, the adoption of a resolution confirming the downtown Culver City Business Improvement District. The downtown Culver City Business Improvement District provides services for the businesses in downtown relative to the operations, maintenance, beautification, and marketing, and that is reflected in their work plan. There are no proposed changes to the DBA's boundary, and there is no increase for 2026. The ordinance was introduced at the last council meeting on October 13th and is being brought back for adoption tonight. Staff is available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I have a motion from Councilmember Fish, a second from Councilmember McMoRan, to open the public hearing. May begin voting. A motion passes unanimously, and Councilmember Vera has returned to the DIES.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any public comment on this?
There are none.
We do not?
No.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to close the hearing?
Also, before we close the public hearing, I would like to report that we did not receive any protest for this public hearing.
Thank you.
I have a motion by Councilmember Vera, and a second from Councilmember McMoRan, to close the public hearing. May begin voting. That motion passes unanimously.
Great. Are there any comments or questions from my colleagues? No? Okay. I seek a motion to adopt the proposed ordinance, which is to approve the resolution confirming downtown Culver City Business Improvement District Advisory Board's annual report and the levy of the downtown Culver City Business Improvement District assessment for calendar year 2026. To appoint the 2026 advisory board, it is recommended by the downtown Culver City Business Improvement District to authorize the city attorney to review and prepare the necessary documents, and to authorize the city manager to execute such documents on behalf of the city.
I have a motion by Councilmember Vera, with a second from Vice Mayor Pusa, to approve as read by the mayor. May begin voting.
My screen did something weird, so I don't know. But I, yes.
You voted aye, okay. That motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. And now, we're going to go to public hearing number two, and this is where I announce that this is the time and place for the hearing of all protests or objections to the continuation of the bid for the Culver City Arts District.
And the resolution of intention was published on October 16th, 2025, as required by the Streets and Highways Code.
Ms. Garcia.
Good evening, Honorable, can you hear me? Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is Elizabeth Garcia, and I'm part of the Economic Development Team. Tonight, for your consideration, is a resolution confirming the Culver City Arts District Business Improvement District's annual work plan, the levy of assessments for calendar year 2026, as well as the appointment of the bid's advisory board. There are no changes to the assessment rate and boundary, and there are no changes to the boundaries of the Business Improvement District for this year, for calendar year 2026. This concludes my staff presentation. I'm available for any questions you may have at this moment.
All right, thank you. Seek a motion to open the hearing.
I have a motion by Councilmember Fish, a second from Vice Mayor Pusa, to open the public hearing. May begin voting. All right, that motion passes unanimously.
Okay, great. And then, do we have any public comments?
There are none.
Okay, any protests?
There are no protests received for this item.
Okay. Seek a motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion by Councilmember Vera, and a second from Vice Mayor Pusa, to close the public hearing. May begin voting. That passes unanimously.
Okay, great. And then, I seek a motion to adopt the proposed resolution, which is confirming the Culver City Arts District, Culver City Arts District Business Improvement District's annual report and the levy of the Culver City Arts District Business Improvement District assessment calendar for 2026. Appoint the 2026 advisory board, it is recommended by the Culver City Arts District Business Improvement District, authorize the city attorney to review and prepare the necessary documents, and authorize the city manager to execute such documents on behalf of the city.
I think I have a motion from Vice Mayor Pusa, a second from Councilmember Vera, to approve as read by the mayor. May begin voting. Vice Mayor Pusa? Thank you. That motion passes unanimously.
Hey, thank you. Okay, on to public hearing number three. May I motion from council to receive and file the affidavits of publication and posting of notices and correspondence received in response to the public hearing notices?
I have a motion from Councilmember Vera, a second from Councilmember Fish, to receive and file. You may begin voting. That motion passes unanimously.
Great. We have a staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Lisa Soger, Chief Financial Officer. We're here this evening to conduct a public hearing pursuant to the Federal Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, or TEFRA. TEFRA requires that a public hearing be held by the governing body of the jurisdiction in which a project to be financed with tax-exempt financing is located, and that the governing body approve the proposed financing. 4464 Sepulveda Boulevard LP has asked that the California Municipal Finance Authority, the CMFA, be the issuer of tax-exempt financing in an amount not to exceed $65 million. The proceeds of the bonds will be used to finance the acquisition, construction, improvement, and equipping of a multifamily rental housing project located at 4460 4464 Sepulveda Boulevard. The CMFA is a joint powers authority formed to assist local governments, nonprofit organizations, and businesses with the issuance of both taxable and tax-exempt debt. The debt to be issued by the CMFA will be the sole responsibility of the borrower. The debt to be issued by the CMFA will be the sole responsibility of the borrower. The city of Culver City will have no financial or legal obligations or responsibilities with regard to the repayment of the debt. All financing documents will carry disclaimers that the loan is not an obligation of the city. The city will also bear no costs in the issuance of the proposed debt. The council previously granted approval of the proposed financing on October 28th, 2024. The approval expires after one year and must be granted again after a second public hearing. It is recommended that the city council adopt a resolution approving the issuance of bonds by the CMFA for the benefit of the borrower. Such adoption is solely for the purposes of satisfying the requirements of TEFRA, the code, and the California Government Code, Section 6500. I can answer any questions, and we also have tonight with us Jared Suzuki from the CMFA, who can answer specific questions if you have them.
Okay, great. Thank you. Do we have any questions from my colleagues? Councilmember Moore, Councilmember Vera? Okay, no questions. All right. May I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I have a motion from Councilmember McMorn and a second from Councilmember Fish to open the public hearing. May begin voting. That motion passes unanimously.
Okay, great. Do we have any comments or protests from the?
Yes, we do have four speakers sign up tonight.
Okay.
They would be minute and a half?
Let's do 90 seconds.
They would be Jamie Wallace, Leah Pressman, Melissa Sanders, and Disa Lindgren. Our first speaker is Jamie Wallace. Jamie, I've unlocked you. You can unmute yourself. Go ahead. Jamie, it looks like you're live, so. Okay. We're going to come back. So the next speaker is Leah Pressman.
Hello, thank you. Good evening. I speak to express my support for the approval of
I don't know, she just went away. I don't know, it keeps linking.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, sorry. Go ahead.
Good evening. I wanted to express my support for the approval of the tax-exempt bonds to help finance the Jubalo Village Affordable Housing Project. This is not a big deal. The city council approved the same bond issuance last year in October and simply needs to renew it. I fear that members of the public may get the mistaken impression that this will cost or obligate the city financially. As we just heard, it does not. Approval costs the city nothing, but failure to approve these bonds could well cost the city. The Jubalo Village project is a key part of our obligation to affirmatively further fair housing and meet arena goals. There'll be serious costs if we fail to meet arena goals. So not approving this bond would really hurt the project. I think that's a bad idea. If the city, if the bonds pass, the city actually gets $19,000 in fees charged to the borrower. That's our portion. And we don't get it if we don't pass the bonds. Jubalo Village also may bring in money to our school districts by housing families whose children will attend our schools. Approval of this financing does not obligate Culver City in any way. Culver City badly needs more affordable housing units, and construction of this 100% affordable development is an appropriate use of tax-exempt bond financing. I encourage you to approve this bond issue. Thank you.
Great, our next speaker is Melissa Sanders. Melissa, you're unmuted. Go ahead.
So here's the thing. We do have multiple other projects with more than the 99 affordable units that Jubalo is claiming to build in the pipeline. And they are not asking for any money whatsoever. So I think that if you guys are going to support this, which by the way, I think you did when we were only giving them a couple million dollars and we could actually afford a couple million dollars, they put $20 million in escrow and make sure that they repay us the $20 million that they do not deserve. Honestly, they needed to do this themselves. We should not be supporting this project. We have other projects going in with no money from the city whatsoever. We are already making arena goals. We already have other projects that will meet our goals. There is no reason whatsoever for this project to go forward with taxpayer funds. $20 million taxpayer funds, and they are taking everything of ours for the next 20 years. So I say don't support it because we have other projects that are not taking $20 million of taxpayer funds as well as all of our vouchers for the next 20 years. We have other affordable housing already in the pipeline that will more than cover Jubalo Village.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Disa Lindgren.
Hello again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the city council. I want to commend and thank the city staff for the excellent staff report that does a good job of explaining something that is not something the average layperson knows about. I certainly had never heard about the TEFRA and the requirement for a hearing about this at the municipal level. But I think Leah Pressman did an excellent job of explaining why it's so important that you approve this. So thank you so much for supporting P H 3.
So we're going to circle back to Jamie Wallace. Jamie?
Let's see if it works this time. Yes?
Yes, it does. Go ahead.
Ah, geez, Louise. Yep, this is absolutely pro forma. The state, you guys aren't going to listen to anything or do anything. So I just want to take this opportunity to remind the council that we're spending $16 to $36 million of taxpayer money to support one project with no return on investment or loan repayment, wiping out our ability to help more renters in the future. The developer is not even a Culver City constituent. And even if it's nonprofit, it's not city-controlled. So in a sense, you can say it's private. You're throwing more money than other cities usually do. So many affordable units are in the pipeline, ready for development without city funding. This is fiscally irresponsible and puts the city budget in worse condition than it already was. Thank you.
That's the end of our speakers.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I have a motion from Vice Mayor Pusa, a second from Councilmember Vera to close the public hearing. May begin voting. And that motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. One last round to see if my colleagues have any comments on this. Nothing from Councilmember Fish, Councilmember McMorn, Councilmember Vera?
Comments, yes. Thank you, Mayor. Although this item is more performative than anything really in nature, I don't support the project. I didn't support the project moving forward with taking $20 million from our emergency, our emergency reserve funds. I cannot and will not support this item. And the $20 million, that number sort of comes up in our next item, also A1, which I think I will draw attention to it there. But I can't support this. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Vice Mayor Pusa?
Thank you. I am going to support this, but I do want to let the public know that the planning department puts out a projection of how many housing projects are in the pipeline and how many housing what housing we still need. So with all the projects that are already built and already in the pipeline for very low income, we still need 758 very low-income units. We still need 390 low-income units, and we still need 511 moderate units. So this will go towards those numbers, and I think this is a great investment in affordable housing, which we desperately need. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So when this came up a year ago, you know, we're renewing this essentially because it expires after a year. I voted for it. I voted yes. And it was because at that time, our commitment was $4 million as a city, and since then, it went up to 20 million. And as alluded to by Councilmember Vera, we're going to hear about it in A1. It points to our structural deficit and you know, 16 million added to the original 4 million. That is not a good place for us to be putting ourselves into. Affordable housing is important. It's part of our mission. It's part of our goals. And we're working hard on that, and we've got a lot in the pipeline, as mentioned. But I can't support putting our financial status at such risk. So I will be voting no on this, but it looks like we have a, actually, I'm requesting a motion in a second, and I will read what that is towards. Conduct the public hearing under the requirements of TEFRA and the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended the code and adopt a resolution approving the issuance of revenue bonds by the California Municipal Finance Authority for the benefit of the Community Corporation of Santa Monica, a California nonprofit benefit corporation on behalf of 4464 Sepulveda Boulevard LP, a California limited partnership or other ownership entity created by 4464 Sepulveda Boulevard LLC, a California limited liability company. Its general partner or by another affiliate of the sponsor has undertaken a proposed plan of finance that includes the issuance and re-issuance from time to time of one or more series of revenue bonds in an outstanding principal amount not to exceed $65 million to finance and refinance the acquisition, construction, development, and equipping of a 95-unit qualified residential rental project to be owned and operated by the borrower and located at 4460 and 4464 Sepulveda Boulevard within the city of Culver City. Such adoption is solely for the purposes of satisfying the requirements of TEFRA, the Internal Revenue Code, and California Government Code, Section 6500, and approve the deposit of approximately $19,183.40 in issuance fees to the Culver City General Fund.
Thank you. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Pusa and a second from Councilmember McMorn to approve the item as read by the mayor. You may begin voting. That motion passes four ayes and one no from Councilmember Vera.
I'm sorry. I meant to, can I pull that back to? I went on autopilot. I'd like to make that a no, please.
Do they have to vote on revoting?
May I request to bring it back so I can vote no on this, please? We need a motion in a second on that?
I need a motion in a second. Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Vera and a second from Vice Mayor Pusa to revote for item P H 3.
As a point of voter, doesn't it have to be someone who voted for it to call it back, or it's just whoever is up here? I just want to make sure that's clear.
I appreciate that, Councilmember McMorn. Technically, a motion for reconsideration does require somebody in the majority to make the motion. It sounds like Mayor O'Brien is asking for a revote to correct an error, which isn't really contemplated in rules of order. But the city council also has discretion to allow it if they choose. If not, then I recommend treating it as a motion for reconsideration, which would require somebody from the majority to make the motion if you're willing to do that for your colleague.
I just made the motion.
Thank you. I have a motion from Councilmember Fish and a second from Vice Mayor Pusa to reconsider the vote for item P H 3. And you may begin voting. Thank you. That motion passes unanimously. So we'll revisit the vote for item P H 3.
Swing and a motion in a second.
Thank you. And I have a motion from Councilmember Fish, a second from Vice Mayor Pusa to approve the item as previously read by the mayor. And you may begin voting.
Thank you.
Thank you. That motion passes three ayes and two nos. Nos from Mayor O'Brien and Councilmember Vera.
Thank you for the report. Okay, on to A1. We're ready for a staff report, please.
Okay. Clerk is pulling up our staff report, our presentation. Okay. Good evening again, Mayor O'Brien and City Council. I'm Lisa Soger, your Chief Financial Officer. I'm here with Elizabeth Shavelson, our Assistant CFO. We are here tonight to discuss ways that the city can increase public participation and transparency in the city's budget process. Over the past year, council has asked staff to return with various items related to this topic, and we are consolidating some of them into tonight's staff report and presentation. Next slide, please. So first, we are going to ask council to consider whether to conduct a civic assembly to help develop strategies for public engagement in the budget process. Funding was included at the time of budget adoption for an enhanced public process, and council directed that the matter return for more direction on the format. The city council Subcommittee on Governance received a presentation from Public Democracy Los Angeles Representatives, Michelle Dennis and Wayne Liebman, about civic assemblies. In a few minutes, the council will receive a presentation from Ms. Dennis tonight about those just civic assemblies and a recommendation to forego a competitive process and award an agreement directly to healthy democracies. The Subcommittee did not make a recommendation on whether there should be an RFP or a direct award. So if council wishes to proceed with the civic assembly process, council should also decide the method of procurement. Next slide, please. As the civic assembly would not be ready to fully participate in the fiscal year 2026, 2027 budget process, Ms. Dennis also made some short-term recommendations to help improve public participation. The Governance Subcommittee recommended that these be brought forward to the city council for consideration. Next slide, please. These recommendations include changing the format and scheduling of the two community budget meetings that I did in this this current year for the current year fiscal year budget. Both would be Both would become, instead of those community budget meetings, they'd become question and answer sessions about the details of, one, the mid-year budget, and, two, a second one to be held later on the proposed budget. So it would give the public a chance to understand these very complicated documents. Staff would be available to kind of answer those specific questions and help them understand in advance of the council meetings. And then there would be one new meeting that was recommended, which would serve as an open house with departments in advance of the annual work plan meetings. And at that meeting, department heads would be available to share what work plans they've been operating under, hear from the public in an informal setting about other priorities, and this would be done in advance of staff coming to the council with those work plans. Next slide, please. So here you can see the new proposed budget schedule with those meetings included. The mid-year session and the open house with departments would happen very early in the process in February, so the mid-year budget question and answer would of course be tied to, would happen before we come to you with that mid-year budget. And it would allow people to understand the changes that are being recommended. And then, of course, the question and answer, open house kind of setting with the department heads would happen in advance of us coming in the beginning of March with the work plans. And then the question and answer session regarding the proposed budget would come in May after we publish the proposed budget, but before the departments make their presentations to the council. So again, it would give an additional forum for the public to come and ask questions and be informed. Next slide, please. Finally, Councilmember McMorn had recommended in April of this year that city staff review the questionnaire for departments that was used by the city of Nashville as part of their budget process. We've attached that questionnaire to the staff report. If council desires, staff could include a questionnaire as part of the budget process that we use here in Culver City, and it would be something that we would give to departments, again, in advance of the work plans and might be presented as attachments to the staff reports that we give you at that time. So that's really the end of this introduction. This is more about us as, being able to answer your questions, but maybe, and we would take these items kind of one by one, but before we do that, it would perhaps be prudent to receive the presentation from Michelle Dennis, who's here tonight, and then we can return and have the council address each of these items individually.
Thank you. Okay, I think we take CFO's over suggestion, have Ms. Dennis give her presentation.
City Council and City Manager, before we begin, thank you so much for the opportunity to make this presentation tonight. My name is Michelle Dennis and for the benefit of the public, I'm a Certified Public Finance Officer. I've worked for 37 years in the LA area in different budget and finance positions and at the end of that time period, I spent 20 years as the Director of Finance for the City of Santa Monica. Following that, I taught public budgeting and finance at UCLA for 21 years. And I am a collaborator and volunteer with Public Democracy of Los Angeles, and tonight, excuse me, I speak on their behalf. And I should note that several of the slides tonight were actually prepared and by the Director of Public Democracy of Los Angeles. I have his permission to use them tonight. And I'm a Culver City resident for 44 years. I'm an oldie and moldy. I've been around. Okay. The subject of our, of this presentation tonight is what is the role of a civic assembly in responding to the city's budget challenges over the next 10 years? Next slide, please. The city's budget for the current fiscal year, which was adopted and became effective July 1 and was recently released by October 1 for the public, contains a fiscal, 10-year fiscal forecast, excuse me, one second. That forecast shows that over the 10-year period, there would be a structural deficit of $129 million over the next 10 years and that that would use up all of the city's available reserves. Now, let me just clarify. A structural deficit refers to the ongoing revenues and ongoing expenditures. That is what we receive in revenues every year and what we normally pay out to continue our basic services and service levels. That forecast did not include the impact of the voter approval of the additional quarter percent sales tax in August. So I factored that in and I used the same projection factors that the Chief Financial Officer used, that is that the sales tax would grow by 3.1% every year. And here's what I saw. Here are the results. Over the next four years, a total structural deficit, that is an imbalance between ongoing expenditures and ongoing revenues, of $47.9 million will occur, and that will require using up the same amount of reserves. Over the following three years, there will be rough structural balance between revenues and expenditures, that's ongoing revenues and expenditures. And over the remaining three years, ongoing revenues outperform ongoing expenditures by $3 to $4 million a year if voters reapprove an expiring half a cent sales tax before March The primary implication of these challenges is that for the next seven years at least, there's no fiscal room other than using reserves for government services to expand or be added as the city's population grows. Next slide, please. Now, responding to these challenges, well, first of all, the challenges themselves, however they're responded to, will significantly impact the community. And responding, however the council decides to respond, in my view, will require a new or heightened collaboration and partnership with the community in the budget process. That's because however they're responded to, and maybe no action is one response, will nevertheless have a significant impact on the community. Currently, the community can participate in the budget process by speaking for one to three minutes at council meetings. And planned is a budget priority survey and for the community, as your Chief Financial Officer delineated, for the community to go to two question and answer budget information sessions. Now, these are top-down opportunities created for the community by the staff and the council. A civic assembly provides a way for the community to say how they want to participate in the budget process, and these can be bottom-up opportunities created by the community. Next slide, please. So what is a civic assembly? A civic assembly is a demographically representative group of community members selected by LOT to learn about, deliberate upon, and make recommendations to city council about a public matter. It is up to the city council whether or not to follow the recommendations of the civic assembly. Next slide, please. Now, civic assemblies, and also known as citizens assemblies, have been around for a while. This graph compiled from data from the Organization for Economic Cooperation Development, this is an international organization of 38 countries, Western, Eastern Europe, Asia, Australia, South America, Central America, oh, thank you so much. And most recently, North America and Canada. This graph shows that you can see in the last 20 years, civic assemblies have grown a great deal, a number of them, and it presents 750 civic assemblies in the last, well, primarily the last 20 years. And if you include the last two years of data, we're close to 1,000 civic assemblies. So the world has quite a bit of experience with this method. Next slide, please. So a civic assembly consists of four parts. The first part is council planning. The job of the council planning is for the city council to select civic assembly facilitating organization. The facilitation of a civic assembly requires specific expertise, which has been developed over the years. Secondly, is to determine the topic to be addressed by the civic assembly. Third, determine city demographics to be matched by civic assembly participants. And lastly, fourthly, to choose experts to provide learning input to civic assembly participants. This learning input is distinct for civic assemblies. It's opportunity to have the participants that have been selected by LOT to hear information from experts who would, from all different perspectives, provide information to the assembly participants about the topic. Next slide, please. The second part of a civic assembly is the selection of the participants. So invitation would go to the households in the city and from those, inviting them to participate, the members of the households. For those people who respond yes, they would be interested, a, that pool is, there's a random selection of people from that pool so that, and we know the demographic information from the respondents, to create a pool that represents the demographic characteristics selected by the city council. Then from that pool, a computer process creates multiple combinations of the civic assembly participants so that each combination reflects the demographic characteristics of the city. So later on, Westman proposed a civic assembly of 20 participants. So there would be multiple, maybe 100 or more possible combinations from that prior pool. Then there's a selection of one of those combinations, a random selection. I understand in one city recently, what they did is they numbered each of the possible combinations and put that number on ping pong balls, put it into revolving drum, and had the mayor at random pick one ping pong ball, and that became the civic assembly. It's important to point out that there's, comprehensive support is provided to the one combination of civic assembly participants. So there may be need for childcare, elder care, or other special needs, and that's all included in the budget for the facilitating organization. Next slide, please. So, third part is learning and deliberation. These are the two critical distinctions about civic assemblies. Experts provide initial learning input from all different perspectives on that issue. Then the civic assembly invites members of the community to meet with them, to present their ideas. And the way this is done is that persons come into where the civic assembly members are, and the civic assembly members are gathered into groups of three, possibly four, at different tables. And then members of the community come in and spend a given amount of time presenting their ideas. And then the members of the community get up and move to the next table. So there's a process to make sure that everyone's perspective and view is heard and every civic assembly member can talk to every single member of the community who has come in. And during this process, and this is then followed by deliberation, during the deliberation process, experts continue to be available to answer questions. That's what we, I mean by being on tap, not on top. And there's a structured deliberation process is followed, much like the conversation with the community members, so that everyone's voice is heard, every perspective is considered, and the objective in the deliberation is to reach consensus on recommendations. I'm not saying absolute consensus, but either majority or perhaps a supermajority. And that the deliberation is facilitated by the facilitating organization so that all voices are heard. Next slide, please. The fourth part concerns the preparation of recommendations and then submitting them to the city council. So again, a rough consensus, perhaps a supermajority is sought to form recommendations. The recommendations are written by the civic assembly participants. The recommendations are presented by the civic assembly participants to the city council, and then as expected, the city council would provide written responses to the recommendations. Next slide, please. Now, throughout this process, this question eventually comes up. Can you trust randomly selected people? And I want to assure you that in the area of civic assemblies, over the last 20 years, there's been extensive experience about this question. And the conclusion is that when trust is given to randomly selected individuals, they strive to be worthy of that trust. As I said, worldwide, there have been nearly 1,000 civic assemblies selected by LOT over the past two decades deciding complex issues and some processes that have stymied elected bodies. One key example is in the country of Ireland. The question of what to do with abortion in a Catholic Protestant country stymied the national assembly for decades. They decided to create a civic assembly. The civic assembly met, they prepared recommendations, the national assembly adopted the recommendations and then submitted them to the population for a vote, and over two-thirds of the population approved the recommendations. And there's also abundant academic evidence that diversity trumps expertise when making decisions. Panels of experts are prone to groupthink, diverse panels are not. Diverse panels harness the wisdom of crowds informing recommendations with a wealth of lived experience. The convening government bodies generally adopt civic assembly recommendations, and the public also trusts those recommendations as well because they know they've been developed and submitted by people just like themselves. Next slide, please. Now, let me set the scene here. In 2022, there was a civic assembly done in Petaluma, California. The city had fairgrounds, 54 acres, and then the fair, state fair, decided not to, one of the state fairs decided not to meet there anymore. And for years, the council was deadlocked on how to use that land. A civic assembly was formed of 36 individuals from the community, and they came up with recommendations that 80% of the civic assembly members agreed upon. And talking with the city manager, Peggy Flynn, she said, my goodness, when you have recommendations from the community members that 80% agree on, that's gold, and they're, they've gone through state and county processes and they're just about ready to conclude adopting these measures. and they're just about ready to conclude adopting these measures. The 92nd video you're about to see shows you people who participated in that 36-member civic assembly in their own words. So would you please play the video?
Yes, for democracy.
Turn the sound up, please.
There's many more. Things are resolved or decided through this process. Ultimately, I think no matter what happens, I feel like the public, the community, will feel that they had an avenue for their feelings and thoughts, no matter how minor, from, you know, a ginormous expo hall to a butterfly garden, were represented and heard in this process.
The group is not necessarily the same people that seek out city government to be involved in things. And so I like that. I don't think anybody on this panel will not participate in another community thing, ever. You know, like, everybody is more likely to participate.
We're more invested.
More invested, yeah, in the community. And if that continues to happen, like, what community improvements will we see? You know, like, if citizens actually are engaged?
First thing is, you have 36 people, different backgrounds. Most of them who didn't know each other and were able to work together.
Just the politics the way it is, where they don't seem to want to communicate at all. And I think this is the perfect way to get politics not so political.
All right, next slide, please. Back in June, Public Democracy Los Angeles, in conjunction with Braver Angels, the organization, hosted a model civic assembly at the city's Veterans Affairs facility. It was a three-hour model civic assembly. Normally, the civic assemblies last for several weekends. The participants are involved. So this model civic assembly gave about 30 participants, some from the city, some from Braver Angels outside the city, a taste. It's kind of like getting a whiff of fresh baked chocolate chip cookies. You don't get to bite into them, but you get the aroma. Here are, afterwards, we got some feedback. And here are two quotes. "I was surprised at just how nuanced our discussions could get. And I was so floored by how it encourages collaboration and deep respect between people." Next slide, please. A side benefit from hosting or having a civic assembly is it provides benefits to the city. It provides members of the community an opportunity to create informed, that's the learning process, and deliberated recommendations on complex issues and processes. It builds civic communication skills. To be able to sit at a table and hear different views and then ask questions with the objective of understanding, and then to deliberate so that your objective is to reach as much consensus as possible, that's a tremendous benefit for the community. It enables inclusivity. Let me say that at a recent civic assembly in Fort Collins, Colorado, I'm told that they also, it's 100,000 population city, they had a 20-member civic assembly that deliberated over two weekends. And of the persons that deliberated, one was recognized by city staff. Oh, yes, that's a person who always shows up. 19 other people had never participated in city affairs before. And they were transformed. And it also empowers the community. Next slide. So I have a proposal for you. The proposal is follows. Approve a civic assembly to find out how the community wants to participate in the budget-making process. Retain Healthy Democracy for a maximum of $250,000 to facilitate the following primary civic assembly tasks and various other administrative matters. And let me just say, attached to the staff report was also a draft budget from Healthy Democracy. And the intention is that should the city decide to move ahead and retain Healthy Democracy, that budget would be finalized in conversations between the city manager and chief financial officer on behalf of the city. So the first task is to select a random panel of 20 community members and a few backup people by February 2026. Prepare the selected community members to participate at each public opportunity in the upcoming budget-making process. That's the process for '26, '27, which is almost upon us. And then activate a civic assembly with the 20-community-member panel in July of 2026. Then assist the civic assembly community members to prepare and submit recommendations to the city council in August 2026. Presumably, the council will have an opportunity to review those. And if they choose to begin to incorporate them into the '27, '28 city budget process. All community members who are selected are paid for their participation. And the amount that they would be paid would be subject to approval by the city council. Next slide, please. Contracting a sole source. Only two organizations in the United States have facilitated a civic assembly for local government, Healthy Democracy and Unified America. As I said, the use of this democratic innovation is just beginning to be used in the United States. Healthy Democracy has facilitated six civic assemblies over the period 2019 to 2025. And Unify America has facilitated one in 2023. So it is proposed that Healthy Democracy be retained as a sole-source provider because Healthy Democracy is the most experienced and qualified. There's a lack of multi-organization competition. Sole Source provides specialized expertise quickly. And Sole Source avoids the high administrative and time costs associated with an RFT process to be conducted by city staff. Now, before we close this presentation, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you have, the thought may have occurred to you, why is this 83-year-old person standing before you at 20 minutes to 10 making this presentation? Well, to be honest with you, I've asked myself that question many times over the last several months. And I kept coming back to the same answer. First of all, I've lived in the city for 44 years. I like my city. I care for it. And I firmly believe that taking the recommended actions is the right thing to do for the city as it begins to engage its budget challenges. So thank you very much for allowing me to make this presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. How many commenters do we have?
We had 13.
Yeah, let's go ahead and start with the commenters. And then we'll just combine questions and comments together.
90 seconds?
Yeah, 90 seconds, please.
Okay, our speakers are, I'm going to read the first 10 off Philip Lellaveld, Marcy Bond, Jamie Wallace, Stephen Jones, Melissa Sanders, Janine Wisniewski, who is seated time by Jack Stalen, Shane Henson, Desa Lindgren, Christopher Michael, and Phoebe Garfinkel. So our first speaker is Philip Lellaveld. Philip, I've unlocked you. You can unmute yourself.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. All right, thank you. I submitted an e-comment after asking for this time, so I hope that you will read it. But I would still like to make a statement because some things happened here that I was not expecting. I've attended all of the governance committee meetings where this topic was discussed. And I'd like to compliment Civic Assembly on their presentation and the subcommittee on its work. But I need to address the non-competitive nature of this with two points. One, in response to Bubba's question at the meeting, we learned that civic assembly has all of their experience with fun projects, like planning fairgrounds and playgrounds, and has zero experience discussing financial matters. They do not have any experience doing budget trade-offs and the discussions that need to be had and the results that need to be gotten from a budgeting process. The second point is, in a city of 28,500 registered voters, if you choose 20 random participants at a budget of $250,000, are you, as a council, prepared to defend paying $12,500 per citizen to advise you when the public will do it for free?
Our next speaker is Marcy Bond, but I am not seeing her online. So we'll skip to the next speaker, who is Jamie Wallace. Jamie, I've unlocked you. You can unmute yourself.
Okay, did it work this time?
Yes.
Okay. I'm so bloody confused. What Ms. Sogar described was current public sessions that the public could attend and learn about the budget? If this is true, then where is the need? What does Cback, or, I'm sorry if I'm, it's the wrong acronym. What do they do? They're great for advice. Do you even listen to them? And yet, you might listen to the civic assembly. I echo Mr. Lellaveld's comments. He nailed it. There's no RFP, there's no looking at other groups. These things have been used for smaller things, youth homelessness, the question of abortion in Ireland, which is a huge issue, very complex. But a budget is even more complex. You have to understand the physical restrictions on a city, what money can be used for, what it can't be used for. There's a huge amount that they would have to learn in a very, very short period of time. And if there is no physical room other than using our remaining reserves to pay for government services, why on earth would we set aside a quarter of a million dollars to try a new procedure to get folks to pay more attention? I've been a volunteer. I created the backpacks program. And I'll tell you, hanging on to volunteers is really, really hard. They don't stay.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stephen Jones. Stephen's online. Stephen, I've unlocked you. You can unmute yourself.
Thank you. Residents have been demanding change to the budgeting process for years now. But change is slow, and we understand that. After years of resident demands, we appreciate the short-term changes that are proposed for the '26, '27 budget cycle. And we're hopeful that the proposed civic assembly process will result in more significant changes that can open up the budgeting process two years from now in the '27, '28 cycle. I think it will be a tragedy if it gets pushed even further than that. So please act with urgency. I do think sole-source contracts deserve skepticism, but the city's policies treat professional services differently. And this is a situation where the provider is formally recommended by a local expert in public finance who has significant knowledge of the field of consultants at issue here. It's also common practice for the city council to routinely approve sole-source contracts with much less evidence than we have before us here. For example, in 2024, the city council approved a multimillion-dollar, 10-year sole-source contract despite the fact that we already contracted with an alternative source for the very same equipment. In no universe were they the only source of that equipment. And the supposed evidence in support of approving that contract was a letter from the vendor itself. It wasn't even evidence from an independent source. In contrast, here, the provided evidence is significant, and it comes from an expert source who is independent of the vendor. Again, please act with urgency. Residents have been demanding a more open budget process for years. This plan will result in changes to the budget process two years from now at the earliest. Further delays are not acceptable, and Culver City can't wait any longer. Some commenters don't seem to believe in the people of the city, but I know you do. So please do the right thing. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Melissa Sanders. Melissa, I've unlocked you. You can unmute yourself.
Thank you. Where to begin with this insane idea? The people, yes. You always claim you have the best people. And then you hire people like for the Move project, who were supposed to be the best at what they do, and they installed an illegal traffic pattern. The people you use for surveys never lock them. No. Here's the other big problem with this, at least in particular to three of the five of you sitting up there. You had the entire city, including the fiscal department and the city manager, tell you, do not approve the Jubalo Village project. It will put us into fiscal freefall. And the three of you still did. So you've already got different committees and different commissions making suggestions. You've got city employees, who that is their job. And you don't listen to them. So this $250,000 will be flushed down the toilet because the three of you will still do exactly what you want to do. I am tired of this BS fake caring of what people say because you don't care what people say. You only care about what you think. That is how we're going into financial freefall because you decided to give $20 million taxpayer dollars to an outside developer because you didn't listen to the people you have hired to do the consulting. So no, 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 no.
Thank you.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Janine Wisniewski, who hasn't been seated by Jack Stalen. Janine, I've unlocked you. You can unmute yourself.
Yeah, thank you. I'm using a different microphone. Can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Okay. I urge council to say no to this item. I listened carefully, and this civic assembly proposal is vague. It's costly, and it gives every appearance of cronyism rather than transparency. The entire $250,000 that was set aside for community budget outreach is now potentially being handed to a single consultant for this one project with no indication that any of it would be reserved for other outreach efforts or public forums. That is not a responsible use of the public funds. So why are we doing this? To what end? No one seems to have asked whether residents even want this except for a shadowy Culver group that shows up every time and asks for more for what they want instead of the general public. Civic assemblies are not typically used for budgeting. They are usually created for a single, well-defined policy issue, like abortion in the Catholic Church and perks, which is what the consultant said. Not to advise on how a city manages its entire budget process. This looks less to me like a community need and more like a nice project, nice feel-good project for a consultant. And a feel-good project to, what, train residents? And let's be honest about how this will play out. The city will send emails that is about civic assembly. Most people will ignore them. And the same small circle of engaged residents will volunteer again. That is not broad community input. Even worse, skipping an open RFP, directly choosing Healthy Democracy and promoting a consultant with public ties to a council member, Mr. Fish was endorsed by the consultant, makes this look like insider dealing and not civic engagement. If the goal is to build trust, this is the wrong way to start. And frankly, I do have a hard time taking seriously a council that spent $20 million on a single housing project, now suddenly claiming concern about budget transparency and community input. Residents deserve real accountability, real transparency, and real value for their tax dollars. Please vote no, say no to A1. And remember that promise to visit lobbying and dealings and make everything transparent? This is what lobbying and non-transparency looks like. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Shane Henson. Shane, I've unlocked you. You can unmute yourself. Shane, I've unlocked you. You can unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Shane Henson. I'm speaking in my personal capacity and not as a member of the Advisory Committee on Housing and Homelessness. I'd like to speak today in support of Measure A1. I think it's really great that the city is looking to create a more interactive budget process for us. I know we have a very big budget challenge ahead of us. But I think figuring out ways that we can get more community input is really important as we move forward. First, I'm really excited by the Q&amp;A process with department heads for both the proposed budget and the mid-year budget reports. I know I'm a nerd who likes delving into policy and questions of budget, but I don't think I'm alone. I think other people might like being able to do Q&amp;A with the department heads as well. Additionally, I think engaging with a Civic Assembly is a really innovative and interesting idea. And I think it could really give us new ideas as we're trying to figure out how to handle our budget challenges. I also want to thank Michelle Dennis for her amazing presentation today. And I think it also made it very clear that Healthy Democracy is likely the best organization to receive the funding for this, given their deep amount of experience doing these assemblies. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is, I'm just going to read the remaining speakers. Desa Lindgren, followed by Christopher Michael, Phoebe Garfinkel, Cara Push, Max Clark, and Alex Levy. So our next speaker is Desa Lindgren.
Good evening, Mayor O'Brien, Vice Mayor Puzin, members of the City Council. My name is Desa Lindgren. I want to first thank Michelle Dennis for a really interesting and helpful presentation. I did read all the information that was in the staff report and in the agenda. And I have been following this issue. I just really support this very, very strongly. We're in a time when our democracy and democracies around the world are being attacked in a horrible manner. We do have massive challenges as a species, being able to work with one another. And it's something which has also been in evidence in our community, this really, really very stark polarization. So I think this is an excellent idea. I do think that using the budget as the subject for the Civic Assembly makes a lot of sense because it's something that concerns everyone, whether or not people have been engaged civically or not to date. And I really appreciate the opportunity that we have to embrace this. I think it'll be very, very positive for our city. Thank you for supporting this.
Okay, our next speaker is Christopher Michael, followed by Phoebe Garfinkel. Christopher, I've unlocked you. You can unmute yourself.
Hi, I just wanted to say I support this. And I think that the budget process should be more involved with the public. I appreciate the budget meetings, but there's no way for residents or anyone to actually provide their input or have the council decide on different versions or even talk about different versions of the budget. So having more transparency around that and also having the meetings maybe available online or recorded so that we can review them before the Q&amp;A sessions would be helpful, too. Thank you.
Great, our next speaker is Phoebe Garfinkel. Phoebe, I've unlocked you. You can unmute yourself.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Phoebe Garfinkel. I want to speak in support of Measure A1. I think that the council should approve the short-term recommendations for the budget process for 2026 to 2027. I think that we're looking at a really valuable opportunity for citizens to get involved in the budget process and for us to have more transparency. The city has seen so many budget issues, and there never seems to be enough funding for anything. And so for Culver City residents to be able to be part of the budget-making process and seeing where their money is going and what the city is providing in the budget could be a really great way to build civic engagement and also just to have more transparency in our local government. So I really hope that, I hope that you guys approve A1. I hope that you approve engaging a consultant to conduct the Civic Assembly. I think it's a really valuable opportunity for our city that could bring in some really awesome change. So, thank you.
Great, our next speaker is Cara Push, who's also online. Cara, I've unlocked you. You can unmute yourself. Go ahead.
Thanks. Hi, I just want to speak in favor of the proposed Citizens Assembly. I think it's an awesome idea. Many studies show that Citizens Assemblies strengthen the democratic process and outcomes through broader and more comprehensive citizen engagement, not only with the city, but also, and really importantly, with each other. I think there's a huge value add here that can improve citizens' understanding of and trust in the local government. Likewise, these assemblies seem like a really useful tool that Culver City would be wise to make use of, especially in light of their current financial circumstances. They involve people more directly in local decision-making, potentially leading to more representative-informed and widely-accepted policy decisions. So all that said, I really urge you to follow the recommendations of Public Democracy of Los Angeles and pursue a sole-source contract with Healthy Democracy, especially since there are only two consultants that do the Civic Assembly work, and Healthy Democracy is far and away the more experienced one. This will also allow us to conduct the assembly so participants can engage in this upcoming budget year, this upcoming budget process, before giving their recommendations on how we can improve next year's. So strongly in favor of this. Thank you.
Great, our last two speakers are Max Clark, followed by Alex Levy.
Good evening, council. My name is Max Clark. I'm a volunteer with PDLA, and I'm from Long Beach. My sincere hope is that this opportunity is not missed. I find this concept to be so hopeful. The idea that we can collaborate on a single issue really is important to me personally. I have a lot of division, politically speaking, within my family. And so the idea, some of the people have expressed that in this time of a lot of divisiveness in our whole society, I think that Culver has a real chance to try something that could really change our community. And then I just want to point out that I have 40 seconds left. And this form of input, I come from a real yimby pro-housing guy, which some people like, some people don't. And this format of input is very frustrating because it feels antagonistic. As much as we're all wanting to be happy and healthy together, it doesn't always feel that way. And I would encourage you to think about why you oppose this. Because I think it offers a lot of hope. And especially the people who don't like this council, why wouldn't you trust the people?
Thank you, our last speaker.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Our last speaker is Alex Levy.
Hi, and thanks, Michelle, for the presentation. I really just wanted to share why I think Civic Assemblies are so important. I'm for Civic Assemblies. Public engagement is hard. I am someone who is politically active. And I never went to any kind of town hall until this summer, right? And I'm someone who actually cares. So put that into perspective. It's really nice to say you can just have a meeting and open it up to the public. That would be great if that's how that works. That'd make life so easy. My background is in international development. And I was working with local governments and organizations literally around the world, trying to figure out, how do you get people to care? How do you get them to show up? And the thing that really struck me as Civic Assembly, so that's how I stumbled into this. I was like, this is a real way to get the everyday person in the room, not just the activists, not just the PDLAers, although we're all great, but the real people who have an opinion and can learn and figure out what to do next. So I really just encourage you to think about this as an opportunity, to really shift the conversation, to not just depend on the activists or the people of money, but really figure out, how do you bring in the everyday person? And stipends are just part of it. That's what makes it expensive, but it's needed. That's how you actually get the people involved. So, yeah, that's my pitch.
Thank you. That's the end of our speakers.
Okay, thank you everyone for your feedback and input. So let's go around and have both questions and comments for our staff and for the presenter. Councilmember Fish.
Thank you, Mayor. And yeah, thank you so much, Michelle, for your thorough presentation, for all the work that you've put into this. Just, we welcome you in City Hall anytime. It doesn't have to, you know, it can be for anything at all. We just are appreciative of your presence. And same with Public Democracy Los Angeles. And I also want to just start by acknowledging the work of you CFO Soger and your team, Elizabeth Shavelson. You guys have put in so much work preparing this and also given a lot of thoughtful suggestions and feedback along the way. And I really appreciate your help in the Governance Committee. And then to my colleague Yasmeen Imani-McMoran for her collaboration as well in our Governance Subcommittee. And also thank you, Mayor, for being willing to accommodate putting this into this agenda, since it's timely. I'll just ask, I just want to make sure to level-set on one specific issue that was brought up, which was that Civic Assemblies are typically not used for budgeting. And I just want to be clear with the public, and maybe staff can confirm. What's proposed is not to use the Civic Assembly to actually impact the budget. This is to create more input opportunities, right? I just want to make sure that's clear for the public's sake.
Well, that is actually up to this body, right? So that's one of the things we need the council to formally determine. I think that is what has been proposed, is that it's not to actually design the budget, but it's how to get more public engagement and input into the process. So I think that those are the steps that we're looking, so on the first part of what we're talking about tonight, is that the council consider, do they want to, as a body, move forward with the Civic Assembly process? If that is the case, then the second piece of that is, what is the procurement for the facilitator? Is it that we're going to just take a recommendation and go with Healthy Democracies? Or is there a different procurement where we go out and do an RFP and see what kind of proposals we get? Healthy Democracies is absolutely welcome to submit. And then those proposals could be reviewed. And then the third question, and maybe even, it has to be decided as we move forward, what is the question? And if that question is as proposed, we're looking to gain input on how to improve overall public participation. That's the question. But it really is up to the council. If we're going to engage the process, what is it you want to determine?
Thank you, CFO Soger. Yeah, so I mean, I'm just sort of sharing what I heard from our folks at PDLA, which was that this is really about increasing participation and figuring out how folks want to participate. Because I would agree, a Civic Assembly may not be the right choice for actually imparting changes to our budget, dollars and cents and all of that. So that's not really what I heard from the presentation here. But it's certainly a good point to bring up. And I just want to also confirm that this doesn't change anything about the city's existing process, where the city manager proposes a budget and the council has to approve it or make changes to it. That process is not being proposed to be changed in terms of the city manager suggesting a budget.
That is my understanding. The charter states that the city manager prepares the budget, and then the council adopts that budget.
Okay, thank you. So, yeah, colleagues, oh, and then finally, there was a question about your role with PDLA, Michelle. So I just want to give you an opportunity. Are you paid by PDLA? Are you a lobbyist for PDLA?
No, I am not a consultant. I'm a teacher with a lot of experience. So I am a volunteer at PDLA. And Public Democracy Los Angeles advocates for the use of Civic Assemblies to improve and provide for communities' participation in different sets of issues. So I volunteer with them. I have no contract, relationship with Healthy Democracy. I get nothing out of this process. There's nothing of value that I get, except the satisfaction in seeing my city move ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And, yeah, colleagues, I'll just share my thoughts here. I want to also thank CFO Soger, Elizabeth Shavelson, Christina Burrows, Jessie Mays, for coming to the Civic Assembly when it was here in Culver City, when Public Democracy LA put it on here. Because it was a really enlightening experience just to be at a table with people face-to-face without knowing the politics of the person or their lived experience necessarily or anything about them, and just working through a problem in front of us. It allowed us to kind of get right down to finding solutions and leave some of that typical baggage at the door that we often experience in local politics, and just see each other as people and find practical solutions together. And it was really, really, I would use the word "hope." Like one of our speakers said, it was a hopeful experience for me. And so, you know, we've heard all year, we have a structural deficit in the city. It was identified over two years ago. Our expenses are outpacing our revenues. And Ms. Dennis gave a really good recap of that. And while the forecast does look better after the passage of Measure CL, Michelle hit the nail on the head, I think, when she said there's not a whole lot of room to grow as our city grows. And we do have some revenue strategies in the works. But as our population grows, I think it's going to be more important than ever that our residents have a seat at the table when it comes to the document that has such a large impact on our everyday lives. And I know we all come from this dais from different perspectives. But one experience I do know that we all share, colleagues, is the experience of campaigning, of knocking on doors and asking our neighbors what their hopes are for the city. Last year, I did just that, talked to thousands of people who told me they needed their trees trimmed, they needed a speed bump on their street to slow down cars, they wanted their potholes filled, they wanted playgrounds renovated and more accessible for their kids. Parents talked to me about needing more childcare programs, summer camps, and park space for their kids to enjoy. And then came the budget process, when it was time to really put pen to paper. And a lot of those voices, pretty much all of them, were missing. And our Finance Department put on two fantastic information sessions. They allowed community members to get information on the proposed budget and ask questions about it. But other than coming to council and speaking for a couple minutes, the avenues for residents to really actively participate in a meaningful way and help shape that document were few and far between. And for the most impactful document we produce each year, the city budget, there wasn't a real clear opportunity for them to have a seat at the table. So I'm looking forward to the really short-term suggestions that Michelle that we discussed in the Governance Subcommittee about having an open house and kind of moving up some of those information sessions earlier. I think those will be fantastic. And then the Civic Assembly, it's a $250,000 price tag. So that represents a little over 0.1% of our $180 million general fund. And for that, I think it is a modest but long-term investment in our city that's going to result, hopefully, in a budget that more closely reflects the needs of the community. And that's what this is all about. So by improving the way we engage residents in the budget, we strengthen trust, accountability, and ultimately, the decisions we make about how to invest in our community, hopefully, those decisions are, the trust in our community is reflected in those decisions that we make. So the question, I think, like CFO Soger mentioned, the big question here is whether to pursue a sole-source or RFP. I agree with Mr. Henson when he said that RFPs are generally preferred. preferred, or I think Mr. Jones said that. In this circumstance, since this is a professional services work, we're not required to do one. But more importantly, I think Healthy Democracy, sorry, I think Public Democracy Los Angeles really did a lot of that hard work for us. They provided us with an analysis that's attached to our staff report of these two, of these two providers. So there's really a lack of competition here. And Healthy Democracy is by far the most experienced and qualified. And I think more importantly of all is, if we do an RFP process, and the reason that I personally think we should forego that is we won't be able to, the folks that we put on the civic assembly won't be able to actually go through the existing process. So an RFP makes it a longer process, and we won't be able to actually, my understanding from staff, is that we won't have the time to actually have those participants go through the existing process. And happy to be corrected if that's not the case. But if, by doing sole source, we can have those people go through the existing process, which is, I think, critical for the success of this, is people going through the process we already have and saying, oh, this worked, this, you know, this needs improvement, and actually building off what we've, the work we've already done. So, yeah, I'll end. I think we have an opportunity to invest in something for the long-term health of our city, both our fiscal health, but also our civic health. How do we talk to one another? How do we face each other and make hard decisions? And I think that is something that's really exciting about this prospect. And I also want to add that Councilmember McMoran's original proposal of the questionnaire, I think, is another really additive proposal here that just enhances the work that city staff is already doing and enhances transparency with the public. That's all I have. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember McMoran.
Thank you. Thank you to CFO Soger and your team, and of course, Assistant City Manager's team as well, for all of the support in the Governance Subcommittee. That is a brand spanking new committee, and we've been quite busy, as you all can see. Very grateful to Ms. Dennis for being here this evening and all of the deep work that you've done to support us being here in this moment. Really grateful for all of the comments. And, I mean, I'll be pretty brief. I've been very focused, I mean, this is my fifth year on council, I've been very focused on lowering barriers for folks to participate in our city processes. As someone who did not always feel welcome, like my voice or my opinion was welcomed or frequently uplifted or centered in city discussions, whether that was at the school district or here at the council level, it was incredibly important, or it is incredibly important to me, to think about when we're in spaces, when we're hearing items, whose voice is not in the room, what are we doing to make sure that we are making our spaces as comfortable as possible for folks to be a part of them. A part of that is how we speak to one another, which sometimes listening to comments, it's very interesting how comfortable folks feel speaking to your neighbors. We're all neighbors in this 5.2 square mile city. And we all deeply love and care for this community. I always like to root there because whether we come around to these things the same way or differently, we're here, we're here in this space, we're engaging because we deeply care about the now of our community and the future for our children and hopefully their children. So I am very interested in moving forward with the civic assembly work. I do, you know, and again, not to be repetitive, I know that the protocols typically move forward with a RFP, but as cited, and I think the second attachment to the staff report, it's clear that, you know, the information and Healthy Democracy is very prepared to do this type of work. And again, this is going to be looking, and hopefully we can fine tune this from the dais, but this is looking at how we can ensure to get more participation. Again, so much kudos to CFO Soger, who two years ago did the first workshop for the city, last year did two workshops for the city. But we're not seeing the level of engagement and input that we could see. So there's always room for improvement. That's never a knock on where we are. It's just an acknowledgement that we can always do more and hear from more voices and ensure that our processes are really doing and our services are doing the things that we hope that they do. So to ensure that the folks who are participating have the opportunity to see the status quo, and that they will hopefully also be able to give us recommendations to move forward going through the full process. So I support the waiver of the RFP for the professional services work for the civic assembly process, with the question specifically being, how can we increase public participation in the budget process? So I would support the $250,000 allocation there. And I would really like, you know, I hope colleagues will agree to, and the finance committee questionnaire is 10 questions. Again, since I've been on the council, I don't know if I've uniformly seen the same presentation from each department. We do get, like, the spreadsheets, and if you dig into that huge book that our amazing CFO team produces annually, and really dig in, you can kind of see, okay, this is where this department is staffing-wise, okay, this is what their goals are for this year. But it's, it's not like in a clear, you know, very simple, very transparent. And again, we will still have all of those. It's not replacing any of, any of the book. But hopefully it will allow folks to kind of have a, you know, a bird's eye view of, like, these are the goals, this is what the department looks like. So it's a really simple 10-question questionnaire that I think can only add to transparency as we continue to move our budget processes forward. So I'm excited about the potential of change. I'm excited about the opportunity for additional transparency and accountability as we always seek to better our city services and support our neighbors and community better. So I'm excited. This is like a, you know, really full circle moment. So again, grateful to my colleague for your leadership and collaboration that has brought us to this moment, and looking forward to hearing from the rest of my colleagues this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vera.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Dennis, thank you so much for your, your hard work and your presentation this evening. Lisa, thank you so much for everything. You know, in, in moving forward, I want to, one, commend you for, you came on board, and a lot of things that are in place now were not when you came on board. So, and a lot of it is about the participation in a budget and how you sort of, you know, with Councilmember McMoran's suggestion about graphing things and whatnot, making it a lot easier for residents to really grasp what was going on. But then really your attention and your detail into really creating and crafting more community participation. So thank, thank you for, for that. In terms of moving forward without an RFP, especially for this amount of money, I know it's up to council's discretion, but is that sort of customary? I can understand for maybe a smaller dollar amount, but for this type of expenditure?
Well, normally, I think both Elizabeth and I have tried to, in our, our time here, to kind of hold departments to higher standards and get them to do RFPs, really go out on the marketplace, especially when we're talking about large dollar amounts. I mean, that really is a best practice, because whether or not there is, we don't know everybody who's out there, right? There may be other people who are interested. And that is our best job at being stewards of the public funds. We go out and see in a competitive process what is available.
Right. Yeah, I appreciate that. We do that sort of across the board with every department, and I like that you brought that up. And I think it really is important moving forward. You know, there's a lot of comments and questions made that I don't know that I agree with 100%. You know, spending $250,000 to pay a group of people to come up with ideas to bring to city council that we submit to the city manager that is his duty under the, or their duty, whomever it might be, under the charter to craft a document, a budget to put forward. You know, they're talking about a Q and A with department heads. We can do a Q and A with department heads and save us $250,000. I mean, you know, and a lot of the talks are talking about structural deficit and how moving forward, you know, we really need to be mindful of that. But yet, we have no problem investing a quarter million dollars, plus whatever time staff is going to have to spend on this. In my opinion, you're, you're asked to task or do probably the heaviest, heaviest lifting of your job is creating the budget. But yet, in doing that, now we have another sort of football we're going to hand you and say, well, run with this one too. And how much money that's going to cost? How much are we going to pay them? How much more money is this going to cost if, if this moves forward? A lot of it really, it concerns me. It really, it really does. You know, somebody, one of the speakers was talking about there's no way for input. I think there's plenty of ways for input. And I know during budget session, we each, each one of us get multiple emails from residents who, hey, this is what's important to me. This is what I want to see. This is what I don't want to see. This is moving forward. You know, and, you know, I did campaigning as well this, this last season, and knocked on a whole lot of doors as well. And I don't know that any of the conversations I had with individuals was, hey, how come we can't participate in the budget? And, and to be quite frank, I think if, if this item were to come forward, if I said, hey, let's do this, and this is who I want to do it, do it with, a lot of community members that would still be talking about what the heck is going on. And I think that should just be, you know, held across, across the board. But more importantly, what worries me is that, okay, great, we want our trees trimmed and our street lights on. And I think we all can agree that we want that. But when you're working with a finite, finite amount of money and your need to ensure, I think, first and foremost, public safety, and how we're going to keep our community safe, and we don't have a safe community, our businesses don't want to stay here, our residents don't want to stay here, the school district will decline. And I worry this is just another mechanism behind defunding, because ultimately, you know, my colleagues have no problem saying the biggest budget is our police budget, and how we're going to trim, trim the fat on that. And I think we're ready, sort of trimmed it as much as we can moving forward, especially as we should be ramping up for everything that's coming forward, whether it's the soccer, or the football, or the Olympics. And to start spending more money and figuring out how we're going to trim the budget. And I said, this, it worries me that it's, recommendations are going to come for defunding, plain and simple, without, you know, putting any sugar on top of it. I think there's better use for the funds. I think ultimately, we, as a council, are the ears of our community. Those who reach out to us can obviously have their voices heard through us, or here, or in the meetings that you're holding. So if this does move forward, I urge council to do it the right way, to do it how we sort of hold every other item that comes forward is creating an RFP, to do it the right and fair way. But overall, I can't support this. I think we, as the council, are responsible for directing staff and our department heads on what is important and what is not, and then trusting that city manager to come up with a document that makes sense across the board. Mayor, thank you so much.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Puzo.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you to Ms. Dennis and to PDLA, and for the public comments. I'm really interested in this concept overall. I'd have a few questions. Do we know, I'm sorry if you said this, but do we know how much approximate, how much staff time this would involve?
I have no idea. And it is not contemplated within, it is a concern of mine. I have not spoken with Healthy Democracies as of yet, because I don't have council direction. So it's unclear to me how much time this will need. I am concerned that with all the other work on our, and I have a very busy staff, where, you know, especially right now, we're up to our eyeballs in audit. You all see the budget, but the other big thing we do is the audit every year. And so we've been working very hard on closing the books for last year. So I don't really know how much time. I did notice that on the, on the budget for Healthy Democracies, it does say that there's going, you know, the city is responsible over and above the $250,000 to provide the venue, to provide tech and AV support, and to provide additional public outreach. I don't really know what that looks like, so I can't put a dollar figure on it. So I'd have, I'd have to determine what that was, I think. If either, if the council decided to go that route and, and award an agreement, or to have us go without a procurement process and just directly to Healthy Democracies, I think we would need to come back, because this would obviously have to be redefined. We'd have to have conversations with them before we brought back an item with a contract amount for approval.
Okay, thank you. What happens, did you want to respond to that?
There is some staff time. I would extraordinarily strongly recommend that, that the Chief Financial Officer of the city be one of the experts, providing a day to explain the budget process and, and should there be questions, that Lisa would go over there and answer their questions. That's the only staff time I see involved. There may be some staff time looking at the recommendations next summer from the civic assembly output. And at the bottom of the proposed budget from PD, from Healthy Democracy, is that's assumed that the location, the venue to do this would be provided by the city, the civic, you know, the Veterans Affairs location, and somebody to help with some tech support, like one person, and make sure that the microphones and projectors and all that kind of stuff work. Healthy Democracy has extensive experience in managing these things on behalf of cities. And so the assumption is that, should you choose to go forward, the city would refine this proposed budget to work out these details, and of course, come back to the council with that.
Great, thank you. Oh, before you go, there was a question about, sorry.
Yes.
Sorry. What if someone drops out during the process? How is the replacement handled?
Well, the idea is that there would be 20, excuse me, 20 people selected at random, but also some alternates. So if there's a illness, or, you know, a family concern, so forth, so that there's always 20 people that, and the panel of 20 people continues to represent the demographic characteristics defined by the council.
Okay, thank you. And one last question. Sorry, last one. So the assembly members are going to invest all this time. How are we going to manage expectations? So what if, you know, they come back, they make recommendations, council, for whatever reason, doesn't go with them, or, you know, we don't want people to be deflated, we just invested all this time, money, and energy into them? How do we manage all those expectations?
I'm, there's a program director from Healthy Democracy here tonight, Justin Reedy. May I ask him to step up and answer that question specifically?
Sure.
To manage expectations.
Thanks, Vice Mayor Puzo. Could you kind of restate your question, so I'm clear what you're right?
Yeah. So we're going to invest all this time, energy, and money in this 20, assembly of 20 folk, people. And at the end, they're going to make a recommendation, XYZ, and let's say council goes in a different direction, or... And let's say council goes in a different direction or doesn't, you know, thank you, but, you know, we're, we're going to go in this other way. How do we manage expectations of the assembly members just to, how do, like, it may or may not, hopefully it would be in alignment, it would support the way that council's going, the way the city, based on all the information that they're going to receive. Does that help?
Yeah, I think I can, I can speak to that. So I would say it would be, it's, it's pretty rare for convening body, municipality, city, county, we've worked with lots of different governments over the years that, on, on these kinds of projects, for the convening body to reject outright all of the recommendations of a civic assembly. Usually the recommendations that are produced by these panels of a microcosm of the community are really solid recommendations that come from the, the heart and soul of the community. These people take this very seriously, spend a lot of time, as you say, sort of investing in this, and investing their time and energy in this and try and come up with solutions that are ones that are very feasible for the city to do. So it would be pretty rare for them, for the, I think for you guys as a, as a group to say, thanks, we, we kind of don't want to go in that direction. That said, I think they recognize that, that ultimately they're an advisory body to the city council, that you all are the decision makers for the, for the city. And this is really about trying to help the, the city sort of have a better understanding of how the community wants to be involved in this process. And as you go about making these kind of difficult decisions moving forward with respect to setting the budget and thinking about kind of budget priorities, how to make sure the people's voices is, the people's voices are heard in the process. So I think they would understand and respect that, that not necessarily all of the recommendations would be taken into account or, or passed, but I would, I would expect it would, at least some of them would be, but yeah.
Got it. Thank you. That's helpful. I think there, so there, it would be explained to them that it's advisory capacity. I think there's some concern that, you know, what their, the recommendation is going to be a mandate. So I'm glad to know that, you know, that explanation will be there and it'll be clear for their purposes. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. So I, thanks for all of those answers again, and thanks for your work. Over the past couple of years, I've supported many efforts to make our budget process more transparent and accessible, the budget presentations. Thank you to CFO. I'm looking forward to the budget survey that will be included upcoming. And I do believe that tonight's item builds on that foundation. This is just another tool in our toolbox to reach more voices in our community, especially those that we don't always hear from. We often hear, as has been said already, but we hear from the same small group of residents often, not always, and which is amazing, and their input is so valuable. But it doesn't always reflect the full diversity and perspectives of everyone in our city. So it's, from what I'm hearing, this type of civic assembly can really balance all of that out. So participants can really learn, deliberate and come together to make more thoughtful recommendations. I appreciate the transformational benefits that you spoke about, civic communication skills. Sidebar, I think we need more civic lessons, but that's a whole nother issue. But this will be a part of that. We also obviously need more inclusivity, trust and transparency in government. I also agree with, I think there were several public comments that this could bypass some of the polarization in our city to get some outside voices. And they will be compensated, but it won't be at, I think one public comment said 12,500, but it's going to be much less with, that's just dividing that, the total amount, but there's other costs and fees. Also that, I appreciate that the model presented tonight includes support for childcare, elder care and translation services. So I like that that's at top of mind. As far as the police budget or defunding, you know, I personally have been, you know, quite disciplined, deliberate and mindful about the police budget this year. So I want to say right now that this is not a foil for any of that. And ultimately, this is about trust, transparency and connection. And as mentioned, also this won't replace our existing engagement efforts, it will enhance them. So I'm fine with this based on the proposal and expertise, especially considering RFP is not required for professional services. I think this is just a great opportunity to continue to build democracy in our community, which will just, you know, not only be a model for Culver City, but beyond. As far as the logistics, that's a whole nother conversation, I believe, so, but I do also support the, the questionnaire for departments to use during the budget process. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you again to Ms. Dennis and all the community members who spoke and of course, CFO Sogur and your entire staff for preparing this. So I heard the exact same presentation with anecdotes and, and fun sidebars last Friday. I'm not sure if my other colleagues participated in that type of one-on-one, but I got to know it pretty well. Looking at just a lot of different ideas here, but Fort Collins was pointed out, and I had commented when we had our Zoom meeting last Friday, that my daughter lives in Fort Collins, and that they had, they used that as an example of a successful civic assembly where they had 20, 20-person assembly. The population's actually 170,000, not 100,000. I was just doing quick calculation. It's, that's one one-hundredth of 1% of that population. And I'm going, I'm following a path here. The, we have a finance advisory committee that has often said that they feel that they're underutilized. It's a five-person body, and a five-person body in Culver City of 40,000 is five one-hundredths of 1% of our community. And I think that it would benefit us to utilize them more and if there's a desire to gain greater input from our community. We also have a count, I pulled it up while we were going through comments here, 10 committees, commissions and boards totaling somewhere over 60 volunteers, none of whom are paid. So, you know, to decide to pay one body and not pay all these other people who spend a lot of time and effort and, and feel that their opinions are valued, I'm wondering the fairness in that. And then, you know, there was some early discussion here on the dais saying that, well, this isn't about the budget, and yet everyone's talking about the budget here. It's in the presentation here on one of the pages, it says, you know, it says here, to determine the topic to be addressed by the civic assembly, yet we're all talking about the budget. In the context, we've got our CFO doing the presentation. And then in an earlier slide in the presentation, it, you know, the, the heading is 10 years of budget challenges. So it's about the budget and getting input on the budget. And it's pointed out here, I didn't have time to verify the $47.9 million total structural deficit claim, but structural is ongoing, right? Part of that number definitely is the $20 million that we are, like, if, if we did not do the Jubalo project, that 20 million would go into our, we would replenish our general fund reserve. So that's a one-time expenditure that would reduce this to $27.9 million. And I don't think it includes all of our fee adjustments that we've done across all departments and, and yet to be determined, parks fees increases. So, nor IC, I don't think. So that number, I mean, well, we need to be budget conscious, definitely. It's not as bad as that looks. And, you know, related to that, $250,000 is, I mean, our very next budget, our very next agenda item is talking about allocating funds for micro grant for small businesses. You know, Vice Mayor Puzza and I are on subcommittee looking at film permits and reducing, doing a, doing a moratorium on that. We'll be looking at that in, at the next agenda. So that's a reduction of revenues. So, you know, certainly every, every penny needs to be considered. And 250,000 is, you know, yes, we do, and consent items, we sign off on $250,000 multiple times every single council meeting. But those are well-reviewed by our staff and needed. And then I, I truly do agree and believe the voices of the people that are in that video, the feedback that was, you know, uplifted in, within this staff report and from Ms. Dennis's PowerPoint, that people really feel empowered and they, they, they feel heard and they feel appreciated. But again, it's, it's 20 people and I just, the bang for the buck, when we have, we put so much effort into outreach. When, what did CFO Sogur, what did we do when we were advertising our, your Budget 101? How did we go about doing that last year?
There were a number of, it was put out on social media and I think GovDelivery in terms of getting of the Budget 101 advertisement, yes.
Well, and all of our, you know, budget informational offerings.
Yeah. So we pushed those out as much as we could. We, we also offered them and asked the CFO, we solicited questions, we, Dustin made a video that we posted. I wish I could say we had an outpouring of questions. We did not. So we've been trying.
And, and it sounds like there's a direct mail piece to what is being recommended here, which, you know, that, that has varying degrees of success. And I know that you've got, you know, best practices and what you've experienced in other cities and had success with. And then I actually have a question from our city attorney on the Brown Act. If, if, I mean, maybe this isn't considered an advisory body, but it sounds like an advisory body. It kind of walks like it, talks like it. What, is there Brown Act considerations here?
This would be a Brown Act body.
Okay.
If it's appointed by the city council, it, by formal action, which it would be, so.
Okay. So, I mean, that, that has a lot of implications in it. A lot more staff time. So I, I, I can count votes, so I know what's going to happen here today. So I, I just ask that, I, I do think we need the RFP. I do, we, and especially, I don't know if Councilman Rivera's delivery of his point was really as clear as he wanted, but if other people had relationships with a recommended, a recommended expenditure from this council, and it was a single, what do we call it? Like a, what's the term? No RFP.
Yeah, and you would just be foregoing competitive, a competitive process. It's not a sole source in the technical sense.
Okay. It may not officially fall under, you know, a conflict, but it looks bad. It just, it looks bad. So I recommend that we do go through an RFP process. You know, there may be more experience in this specific niche of, of community input called the civic assembly here, but it doesn't mean that we can't get proposals from others that, that, you know, from very qualified organizations that engage in the, in the public, who can, you know, provide similar, better, maybe less expensive ways of doing this. So I just ask for the RFP. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mayor, a quick question.
Yeah.
Have we ever accepted letters from the vendors themselves as evidence that they're the sole provider?
That usually is not about consulting services. That is about, there are certain entities that are the representatives for a product, right? So we are specifying, we have a certain kind of battery backup, right, that we purchase for our traffic signals. And oftentimes, those are national manufacturers, but they, you don't buy direct from them, they have a regional distributor. And so in those cases, we've had let, oftentimes those people provide us with a letter of representation that they are the sole distributor for that particular piece of equipment. Is that, yeah, I think that's, that's the instance. It's not something that we would do for consulting services.
Okay. Thanks. I was picking up on a public comment that was made.
Sure. Yeah.
And may I ask, oh, Vice Mayor, did you have more? Sorry.
Not right now.
Okay. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions to Healthy Democracy, because there was an issue of a conflict that was brought up. Has Healthy Democracy endorsed any candidates or on this dais or have any relationship formally or otherwise with any people on this dais?
No. Thank you for the question. We do not have any prior relationship that I'm aware of. Just to clarify, by the way, about sort of the nature of Healthy Democracy, we're a small but nimble nonprofit organization that's based in the Western US. Our staff are based in Oregon and Washington. I myself am physically based in Seattle, Washington. The rest of our staff are in the state of Oregon. But we're a nonprofit, a 501(c)(3). We don't engage in any kind of political advocacy or anything along those lines. We don't have any prior relationship with, with any member of council. We did, we appreciate the time that, that some members of the council took to meet with us ahead of this, as this got closer to consideration by the council. Does that answer the question?
Yes, thank you. And then, yeah, I also just wanted to ask, when it comes to the RFP versus sole source, the only issue that I had with the RFP was that if we want folks to be educated about the, the current process, so that they could actually make recommendations that were informed by what we currently do, as opposed to just coming and saying, well, here's what you should, you should, you know, here are my recommendations, I haven't seen anything that you already do. So I guess maybe this is actually a question for staff. CFO Sogur, in your view, does the sole source allow us to, and this was something that Ms. Dennis's presentation said, does the sole source allow us to have those folks participate earlier in the process, in your opinion?
Well, certainly, yeah, yes, because if council opts to do, to not go through a formal procurement and just elect to go with Healthy Democracies, we could bring something back at the next meeting, we could negotiate a, an actual agreement and bring that back right away. If we were to do an RFP, we would put something, I mean, we could put something out on the street very quickly, but there would be an amount of time that but there would be an amount of time that we would have to have that out. Typically, we'd run it for a month. We might send it to healthy democracies and anybody else we could, we found in that space, as well as posting it on Planet Bids. But that would take, you know, a little bit of time. We'd then have to review the proposals and, you know, so we're talking about a couple of months. So not impossible, but to get them involved in the process, but maybe they might. I also don't know how much time it would take for any healthy democracies or whoever to set up the assembly itself. So yes, it probably would spill over into the beginning of the budget cycle.
Thank you for that. And so, question back to you then. If this were approved this year, in theory, if we were, if we were able to do this, would we, would the assembly be able to participate in the budget cycle? I think we saw in what Ms. Dennis proposed, that it would start somewhere in February. I mean, if the contract in theory were approved, would the participants be able to to actually see how our current budget process works?
Yeah, that's a great question. And I think so, based on the timeline that Ms. Dennis presented tonight, that makes a lot of sense. And I think, so there's a few things that sort of happen through the process of a civic assembly starting and kind of being prepared to take place. A big one of those is that what Ms. Dennis referred to as kind of the selection by lot of the participants. We sometimes refer to that as a civic lottery. So this is the process of preparing a mailing that goes out to a wide number of households in the community. And then we solicit responses back from the community. All of that stuff takes a little bit of time. And so trying to get those folks back and then use the, have the lottery selection process actually happen, doing that in time to have people be able to participate in that budget advisory process during the kind of mid-budget updates. And then again, at the budget hearings for the next year's budget, that it's much more workable, I think, to do that on the timeline that was presented tonight. And I just wanted to add, I think that's a really innovative way to think about sort of like how to get members of the public involved in this process. I love this idea that you guys have come up with this. To be clear, this wasn't something that we at Healthy Democracy came up with. This is a really interesting idea, I think, for trying to get people who are coming into a civic assembly more informed about the topic that they're going to be tasked with kind of taking on and really involved in kind of the city process for handling this stuff, which I think is great. And sort of improves what is usually already a kind of a direct pipeline from city staff and city council to a civic assembly. And helps them kind of, helps you all have sort of an influence on the members of the public who are coming in to be delegates to civic assembly to help them understand kind of the topic that they're grappling with. Does that make sense? So it's like a really, I think, a great way to help prime the folks who are coming into the civic assembly to be well-prepared to tackle this very challenging issue.
Thanks. That's all the questions I had.
Thanks.
Mayor, one last question.
Yeah, Councilmember.
And this might be for Ms. Dennis or gentleman just spoke. In the PowerPoint, there was, and I'm sorry for not asking earlier, but it said, you know, provide informed recommendations on complex issues and the processes. Is that in regards to complex issues facing the city in terms of the budget or?
Well, in the, may I respond?
I'm sorry.
In the 20-year primary use throughout the world of civic assemblies, there's a raft of issues that they've addressed. They've been used to address the issue of a budget process. They've been used to address the issues of actually evaluating the prioritization that the governing body made. But what's proposed here is to simply ask the panel, on behalf of their fellows in the city, how would they like to participate? After they've actually participated in what the current process is, how would they like to participate? You see, this is an interesting issue that's really important, I think, grasp. Historically, cities have provided its public ways to participate. In a way, the deck is kind of stacked. Simply asking the community members, how would you like to participate, like a whole different ballgame. It's not asking them to make the budget decisions, of course. It's asking how they like to participate. And I think several people said this is like an opening for a really true method for people to have a meaningful voice and to have the experience of being heard.
Okay, I appreciate that. I guess maybe what I'm asking and maybe was answered, I just didn't get it. Provide informed and deliberate recommendations on complex issues and processes. And if that means complex issues facing the city or facing the budget, then is staff going to provide deliberate recommendations? Or what is the complex issues and processes in terms of just an overall budget sort of?
Well, that's what's been done in the last two decades. What's proposed here is to ask that panel of 20 community members, after they've actually experienced on the ground, how they are offered to participate. The question, how would you like to participate? That's it.
All right, thank you so much. You know, I find, I understand what you're saying, but I find it extremely challenging to take a group of individuals and try to teach them about a budget process and provide informed and deliberate recommendations on complex issues and processes. And I would make the assumption that it means facing the city. Each city, I think, is unique in its issues and process, maybe the process of the overall budget. But issues facing the city, I think, should come from staff and the council. And then back on the RFP, I think, you know, if, if Healthy Democracy is the one that comes out on the RFP, great, at least we're doing it the right way. Let's not forego a step that we hold to everyone else. And my understanding is there's other providers, or we don't know if this is the sole provider. There's other providers that might provide the exact same service, maybe a little differently or not. But what's the harm in doing it the right way moving forward? Mayor, I'm sorry to interject again, but thank you so much.
That's fine. Thank you. And I hate digging into this, but I just want to circle back and come back to where I, so Ms. Dennis, are you the same Michelle Dennis who endorsed Councilmember Fish? And maybe it's a different one.
No, same person. May I just?
Okay.
I retired from teaching at UCLA the spring of 2024.
Okay.
And there was an election to be happening in the city. And I noticed that the platform of Councilmember Fish was interesting to me. So I called him. We had a conversation and I discovered lots of residents. And I wanted to support him, so I made a $50 contribution to his campaign. And that's it.
Okay. And I think that's totally fair. And I think every citizen, especially residents, should be able to do that and should do it. It's just, again, relate, you know, you're the person up here speaking and giving the primary recommendation for healthy democracy. And that's, that's the part that I just perceives. Even if all, everything's good and fine, perception-wise, that's why I want an RFP. So, but I'm okay, so once someone wants to bring a motion forward, I think the questionnaire is fine to me. What CFO Sogur outlined in terms of the city's does in the interim, you know, in this upcoming budget cycle, I think that that's all fine. And just in case anyone's asking. And I hope that in the motion that we include an RFP to select the consultant that administers this.
Mayor, may I ask a clarifying question? Just because I want to make sure that I capture the direction.
Really quick, CFO Sogur, before we get there, I just want to clarify. Ms. Dennis, are you, are you proposed to be, receive any money from this process? Are you a employee of Healthy Democracy in any way?
No, I have no financial connections whatsoever with Healthy Democracy or Public Democracy Los Angeles.
Okay. I just, I heard you say something like that earlier, but I just wanted to make sure that that was.
Thank you for asking.
Thank you, Ms. Dennis. Okay, I apologize, CFO Sogur.
And I want to be clear that I'm not alluding to that either.
I just want to make sure that in what, when council crafts the motion and maybe it's, whether it's one or separate, I just want to have clarity in all the pieces, what I'm hearing. And I'll take the easier pieces first, because I think I hear that concurrence from all, that the short-term recommendations that were approved, you know, to bring forward in the Governance Subcommittee, that we would do for the upcoming fiscal year, '26, '27 budget process, sounds like that everyone seems fine with that to move forward. I hear that a questionnaire, everyone seems open to a questionnaire. I just want a little clarity. That was, the questionnaire that was attached came from the city of Nashville, obviously slightly different city. We would, I want to make sure that the council is fine. We would anticipate that we would have to tailor a little bit to our needs. Is there anything, I mean, does council want to see that come back? Are you okay with us tweaking it? I'd like to know how that, how to shape those things up.
Thank you, CFO Sogur, for the request of clarification. I, clearly, it's not apples to apples in terms of how the government runs. And I'm open to you tweaking as, as would fit the processes that we have here. Because, you know, it might be a little different. We, there are requests that are made that we don't see, you know. So, you know, there's a question around that. So hopefully, the essence of this can be uplifted. And if possible, you know, if it could be, if it comes back on consent or something, it could be attached there. But I defer, you know, we have the 10 questions and the overall gist of them, so that's the.
And certainly, I would imagine if it's something that we begin to incorporate, it could always change year to year as we, as we realize, oh, we should have asked something else. We forgot, or this would have been extremely helpful. Okay. That makes sense.
And that feedback, like the whole thing is, you know, continuous process. So we'd love to hear if there's something, maybe if there's something that, maybe there's an open-ended something, right?
Right.
So, but a lot of that gets captured maybe in the presentation.
Yes.
That's kind of whatever folks want to, you know, how folks feel they want to highlight their requests. So, thank you for asking.
Sure.
And if colleagues have any other.
One other question for you, CFO. So I heard two of my colleagues talk about, or expressed a desire for an RFP. I don't personally feel as strongly that an RFP is necessary just based on the information that Public Democracy LA presented in terms of there's two competitors. One has done six, one has done one. You know, one has a lot more experience. But I do appreciate, you know, the desire to want to, you know, cross every T and dot every I. Is there, is there a world where we can do an RFP and still get, to address my colleagues' concerns, and still get people participating, like throwing this out there? We have two more meetings left. Could we put together an RFP and make it a selection? I know the December meeting, we tried to not put stuff on there because it's the mayor vice mayor rotation. But like, is that doable? I just don't want to lose that opportunity for people to meaningfully participate. Because I'm not against the RFP. I'm just, that to me feels like a critical piece of this, is people knowing what you do already.
Understood. You know, we have done RFPs on very tight turnaround. When, as an example, a granting agency requires something, but you have to meet a deadline. We've gone out on the marketplace. We've tried to do that. So I, I think that is possible. Whether, you know, I guess the question would be, but we, because we don't have meetings, I would imagine we could bring something back the first meeting in January. So, you know, I don't know how, if we did that and we really worked to have everything ready to go, I'm not sure how long the process is to select somebody. So would they, could we get a body and paneled by February? I mean, it's, we'd have to work hard. Listen, we work hard all the time. We would have to work hard and, to make it happen and have to be proactive. But we're going to be proactive and, you know.
It sounds like you're saying the earliest that you think reasonably we could get, we could make a decision on the RFP, if we released an RFP, would be just January. That would be us making a selection from the RFP, a selection of a vendor from the RFP.
I think so, yes.
So I guess the question is now to Healthy Democracy and PDLA. It's really to both of you, because I feel like it's, Michelle, okay. I mean, if that, I want to, I want to field my colleagues' concerns and see if we can find, find an avenue, but.
Yeah, I appreciate the question. I do think that, so if a vendor were selected at, I'm not sure when your January.
It's like January 8th or something.
January 8th.
Yeah.
Essentially, the process of going through a civic lottery takes, there's, there are several steps to it that would, you can kind of compress some of those steps. But compressing those too much, you lose a lot of the kind of benefits of doing things like a civic lottery. So designing a mailing that's going out, working with a local vendor. By the way, I just wanted to point out that the draft budget that we shared, which we would obviously negotiate, you know, the kind of the details of that, working with a local vendor to design and print a mailer that would go out to the community, giving time for people to respond to that. So then they could, we'd have a pool of people to do random selection from using the stratification strategies in consultation with staff and council. Those things all take, all take time. You want to have invitations out there for at least probably three or four weeks. That's just the invitation sort of being mailed out and kind of getting to people and giving them a chance to get back to you before a lot of the other selection process work happens. So if the, if the idea is you want to try and get people involved in the budget review process in February, that timeline, I think, would not, would not work.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I don't know if that answers the question or, yeah.
Well, and I, you know, the budget itself is not crafted until May. The pieces that we typically do, we start in March. So not, there are new, the mid-years happening in February and maybe this department open house. So that would be one item, but everything else is March. Again, hearing that it's, it would be a little tight, but we're not, it isn't 1st of February, so we're talking like beginning of March.
Does that change your answer?
I mean, I think there are a lot of sort of like moving pieces. Like generally, we tell, we tell people there's consultation with staff and with council that needs to happen during that process of kind of the civic lottery and planning, kind of the details of how that works. Doing all of that in sort of four to six weeks is not, we would not typically do that. It usually takes at least a couple of months for like, to sort of prepare for the civic lottery process to happen and then start and then, and then kind of be done. So, yeah, it could be done, but it would be, it would be incredibly challenging, I think, and kind of limit some of the process.
Got it. Thank you so much. Well, colleagues, I know we've been on this for a while, so if there's no other questions or comments, I'm happy to put in a motion for.
Do you have, is it possible to do, thank you, sorry, a competitive price quote without a full RFP?
Yes, we can go to other entities. So as an example, the one that was pointed out in Ms. Dennis's presentation, we could get a quote from them and, and, and do that and bring that back to council on November 10th. We could also, staff could do a little more exploration and see if we came up with any other entities.
I'd love to include that. And then the other thing for the motion is that when I've agreed to this earlier this year, the cap was, for me, was at $250,000 and so no more than that. So I'd like to include that in your motion, please.
So, just to clarify, so if, if that were the motion, that, that staff would negotiate so that the total cost, including if we had to have AV staff or whatever, would, would be at 250, right? Not that we're handing out 250 to a consultant, but that, the full cost.
Correct.
Got it.
Thanks Vice Mayor. Oh, sorry, thanks Vice Mayor. And I don't know if Mayor, you had more? I just wanted to ask for clarity on the, on what he suggested, the price, getting the competitive quote, but not the RFP. How does that work exactly? What is the timeline? How would that affect the timeline?
We, staff could go, I mean, again, that would be very quick and we could reach out to other, we could reach out to Healthy Democracies, have a conversation about what they're providing, we could reach out to other organizations in this space and see what, what they're proposing, again, with a schedule, whatever, so at least we've gone out and seen, staff has done an exploration of what is out there and then we could return to the council on November 10th with, with that. So it's not a formal procurement in terms of going out with an RFP and, and giving that time on, on the marketplace, but we, we could go out and, and look at entities that do this.
Got it. Thank you and thanks Vice Mayor for the suggestion. I'm open to that and interested in what your thoughts are, Mayor and Councilmember Rivera.
I, I mean, that's better than what we got, but I'm happy with you guys going forward with the motion and moving on.
Okay, thank you. I'm taking the Vice Mayor's suggestions there with the $250,000 cap for everything, not just what we're contracting, and then doing a quote, doing a competitive price quote. I know our next meeting is pretty packed, is that, do we have, is there going to be any issues with that in terms of doing that at our next meeting that you, that we foresee? Maybe that's a question for John.
Or a question for the mayor.
Yeah, we'll put, we'll put it in.
Okay. So yeah, I guess the motion on the table then would be the, would be moving forward with the Civic Assembly, with the, with the competitive price quote to come back at the next meeting and the questionnaire as well as the short-term recommendations as recommended by Ms. Dennis. Is there anything, did I miss anything, colleagues? Okay.
And confirming that the, the question that we're asking is how to garner increased public participation in the budget process, right? So that, when we're soliciting the quotes, that's what we're asking them to do.
That is the remit, yeah, the question, exactly, yeah.
Okay.
Well said. We have a quick comment from Ms. Dennis, sorry.
If I may, is to provide a quote to facilitate a civic assembly.
Correct.
Addressing this one question and just, you know, there's a, Public Works Directors know this very well, you can get the lowest possible price and then you have a big question about the deliverables. And so this price quote should require demonstration of skills and experience and so forth, doing civic assemblies. It's a very distinct process.
So, thank you for that. I mean, colleagues, I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to just drag this out longer than it needs to, so if I, if, if we have three, three votes for the sole source contract, I'm in favor of moving forward with that, but if, if any of my colleagues feel like they would prefer to support with the price, competitive price quote, I'm happy with that as well.
Vice Mayor.
Great. I would love to do the competitive price quote.
Okay.
Okay.
And I just wanted to clarify with CFO Sogar, the goal would be to have those back by the 10th?
Correct.
Okay. All right, great.
Okay.
And I will clarify, it's not just competitive pricing, it's a, to get a quote to come, entertain, you know, create a public civic assembly, answering the question about the public participation.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
All right. I have a motion by Councilmember Fish, a second from Councilmember McMoran, to move forward with the short-term recommendations from the Government Subcommittee, and then the tailoring of the questionnaire to the city's needs, and then the competitive pricing quotes from under other entities, a cap at $250,000, and this to return by November 10th for council consideration. And the quote would be to create a civic assembly and answer the budgeting question. All right, you may begin voting. Now that motion passes, two nays, two nays from Mayor O'Brien and Councilwoman Rivera.
Thank you. Okay, we are on to action item two.
For purposes of the public, my name's Elizabeth Garcia and I am a project, an Economic Development Project Manager for, with the Economic Development and Cultural Development Department. In September of 2024, City Council directed staff to gather information relative to small business assistance programs. On May 12th, 2025, staff presented two small business programs for your consideration and the action was pulled to be considered at a later date. Staff presented two programs, which I'm going to describe a bit. The first program is a small business technical assistance grant program, which would mirror the Sustainable Business Program. The proposal would be a cohort-based program that would target up to 30 businesses per year to receive technical assistance such as small business workshops as well as one-to-one advising for participating businesses. The program would partner with PCR Business Finance, who manages a local small business development center. The SBDC will provide technical assistance and, and implementation for a period of two years for $15,000 annually. At the end of the program, the city would have a culmination program similar to the Sustainable Business Program and provide a small grant of $1,000 for implementation of recommendations provided. The program would focus on businesses in operation for under two years in Culver City. The second program is a permit, permit reimbursement program, which would provide reimbursement for up to $5,000 for city permit, permit fees for new businesses, removing a barrier to entry. This program would require an initial $50,000 allocation for the, for the first year. Requirements would focus on brick and mortar businesses. If council wishes to proceed with either or both programs, the, the total allocation would be $95,000 per, for the first year and funding would come from the city's general fund. This concludes my presentation and I'm available to answers and any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions from my colleagues to start? No. I, I just have one quick question. On page four of the, I'm sorry I didn't call about this prior, where it breaks down the, the estimate costs, there's a little chart there, it says $15,000 annually for two years for the management fees, which would mean 7,500 per year, right? So it would reduce that, I mean, it's a small number, but it would reduce that down to 37.5 per year? Is that right? Okay.
No, I want to, I want to clarify that it's $15,000 per year.
Per year?
Yeah.
Okay.
I apologize.
Okay, got it. Okay, so the total's correct. Okay, great. Okay, do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, we had two speakers sign up for this item, Melissa Sanders and James Richardson. So we'll start with Melissa. Melissa, I've unlocked you, you can unmute yourself.
I'm only awake because the Dodgers are in their 18th inning. Still tied. As a previous business owner in Culver City, I will just say, anything you can do to support small businesses, because that is the backbone and lifeblood of any city really, would be great. You know, the $250,000 for the consultants, for civic assembly could be better spent, you know, uplifting our small businesses. The $20 million to Jubelo could be much better spent elsewhere. God, you could spend a million dollars on small businesses instead of 20. So again, anything you can do to support small business is going to be important for this city to survive and thrive. That's all I want to say, so please do whatever you can to bring this city back to its glory days and stop having things close every other day. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is James Richardson. Is he still here? Not seeing him online, so that would be the end of our speakers.
Okay, thank you. Let's go around the horn with any comments. Mayor, Mayor, really quick before we, we start getting into this, I just wanted to make a brief comment that I did confer with city attorney on this item that I can't participate and I don't know if you wanted to add anything on to.
Yeah, we evaluated the potential conflict for financial interest in a business entity and determined that it doesn't meet the threshold that would require legal recusal, so he, Councilmember Vera, does not have a legal financial conflict of interest in this matter and can participate.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember McMoran?
Thanks Mayor, I'm going to defer to the Vice Mayor. I believe this was his proposal in September of last year, so I want to make sure that he has the opportunity to lead on this item. Thanks.
Yeah, Vice Mayor, why don't you add your comments so people can respond?
Thank you, appreciate that. Councilmember Warren and Mayor, I'm very proud to support this item. It's one I personally brought forward because supporting our small businesses is central to keeping our city's economy strong and vibrant, and it's important that we balance the work that the city is doing internally, and so we need to address our budget, services, infrastructure, housing, mobility, with tangible support for the local businesses that make up the heart of our community. Sales taxes, we know, is the number one source of revenue and small, small businesses are a huge part of that base, so when we help them succeed, we're not just helping individual entrepreneurs, we're strengthening the city's fiscal foundation. So this pilot program is an investment in our local economy. Thank you to staff for all their work on this. It provides real direct assistance to small businesses, whether that's through the technical support, the grants, or helping them with permitting costs in all areas that can make or break a small operation. I am confident it will be successful and I hope it can grow over time, especially if we see strong results from this pilot program. I also see as an opportunity to expand partnerships with things like CDFI's, Community Development Financial Institution, which are mission-driven lenders that provide affordable financing and financial services to underserved small businesses, and they provide grants and loans so we can couple them together. That could attract new businesses, expand access to capital, and bolster the city's grant funding to make this program more sustainable, but that's a separate thing. At a core, at the core, this is really about investing in people and the small businesses who take risks, create jobs, and give our city unique character. So I'm hoping that this will be supported and look forward to supporting its continued growth. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Fisher, Councilmember McMoran?
Yeah, I just briefly want to say thank you, Vice Mayor, for bringing this forth. I, I had a company right after college. I, I did not go to business school myself. I had a marketing minor, but that was the extent of my, of my formal business education and I would commute to Pasadena because they had a small business development center with free one-on-one coaching for my business, and it was such a lifesaver for me because I learned so much about just the ins and outs of, of running a, a small business. And so the fact that we are providing those services, that we're providing grants, but not just grants, but like full support with this item, one-on-one coaching and then seminars, webinars, I'm really encouraged by what I see here and just thanks for all the work that's gone into it, staff and, and colleagues. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember McMoran?
Thank you. In light of the hour, I'll keep my remarks brief. I'm super grateful to staff for all of the work that has brought this item to this point, all the research, et cetera. Really appreciate the Vice Mayor for bringing this to us and I'm really excited to see what, what kind of impact and what kind of demand we will have for this project. I hope that we'll have some sort of report backs on how things are going, how many small businesses are utilizing the program, just like, you know, just sort of having a feedback loop of how things are going, but again, super excited to see this investment. Yeah, and just looking forward to continued growth, so really excited. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks staff for all your, your effort and I sit on the Subcommittee with the Vice Mayor and, and I know you guys really did a whole lot of work behind it and thanks to the Vice Mayor for bringing this forward. I'm happy to support this, I think, you know, on both counts. This will be something that is a good investment in our community, but actually it's an investment that the city can see some sort of tangible return on, so thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and thank you, Vice Mayor, for bringing this forward as well. And, you know, just a small point, I think many of us have heard it before, but 50% of small businesses fail within five years, 20% within the first year. So the cohort, cohort program especially, I think will be really valuable and it'll be great for our newer businesses and, and I appreciate, you know, the, the skills that can be learned there, you know, with the marketing. I, I think that that's a big critical factor in navigating city. I, I hope we can promote this early when we get those applications in so that we can help them navigate all the permitting and, you know, I, I know I've run into folks starting up and they, they're doing construction on their new business and they're really struggling with that process, so I hope we can include that and, and I, I really like the permit fee reimbursement program as well with a little larger sum that can help businesses that might have hit a speed bump, who have been more established, so it's great. Happy to let the Vice Mayor present the motion.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the two small pilot business assistant program at a total of $95,000. I think that's it.
You want to make the motion?
Push the button.
Push the button.
Push the button.
One second. Come on. There we go. Thank you.
All right.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Pusa and a second from Councilmember McMorn for the approval of two small pilot business assistance programs for at a total of ninety-five thousand dollars. May begin voting. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, thank.
Mayor, may I make an announcement really quick?
Yeah.
Elizabeth Garcia's birthday is today, and it's going to be over in about three minutes. So I just thought we could wish her a happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Birthday.
Thank you, Elizabeth, for everything.
What a fun way to celebrate your birthday.
I'm telling you, you ain't for real until you celebrate your birthday in chambers. You for real now. Happy birthday.
Mine's coming up in January.
Thanks, you guys. Appreciate it. Okay, A three.
And the Dodgers just scored in the eighteenth inning.
Freddie.
Home run.
Yeah, it needs to end. They played two games in one.
Fun times, fun times. Let's get to the DDA for Rethink. Okay. In September 2022, the city and Rethink Culver LLC entered into a development and disposition agreement, or what we would call a DDA, for the sale and redevelopment of city property located at nine-eight-one-four Washington Boulevard, which is immediately adjacent to the Kurt Douglas Theater. The purpose of the agreement was to activate and underutilize city-owned property, create affordable housing, and enhance the local economic and cultural environment. Since the closing of escrow, Rethink has encountered several challenges in the development of their project due to the complex nature of building and coordination with infrastructure components related to the Kurt Douglas Theater. Rethink has completed preliminary construction drawings, however, the cost to build the project as required by the current DDA is infeasible with their current projected financing. To this end, Rethink has requested the city's consideration to amend the DDA relative to certain requirements they believe will allow the project to move forward. There are four categories I'd like to bring to your attention. The first is the removal of the arts-related space requirement. So pursuant to the current DDA, the project was supposed to include an arts-related space, which is now currently two thousand square feet. Rethink would like to lift that restriction for the arts-related space to allow it to be used for any use permitted under the zoning cone, code, excuse me. The original DDA contemplated that the space would be potentially leased and programmed by the Center Theater Group, which is the leasee of the Kurt Douglas Theater. So just for clarification, the city owns the Kurt Douglas Theater and leases the theater to the Center Theater Group. The DDA requires that if the Center Theater Group doesn't use that space, that they have to approve if it's going to be reallocated. At this time, CTG is open tentatively to releasing the space so long as their HVAC system can be relocated into the public right-of-way, which is something that staffs have already explored and we've given a conceptual approval to. The next one is the modification of affordable housing unit mix. So as outlined in the DDA, Rethink is required to provide six affordable housing units as part of the project, which was five studios and one one-bedroom. They are now converting the project to an all-studio mix, and they would like to have all of the affordable units be studios, which will be approximately three-hundred-and-ninety square feet. So just as a reminder, this is a microunit project. Rethink would still be required to provide two very low and four moderate-income units with a covenant of fifty-five years. Two things that are not in the DDA but that Rethink would like your potential approval on is to extend the outdoor dining area along Culver Boulevard. They'd like to extend it adjacent to the Kurt Douglas Theater but closer to their parcel. So just as a reminder, Rethink owns the parcel that the Paskin Building's on and the, where the Center Theater Group yard is, but they also own the parcel where Cafe Vida is. So that's one of the reasons why this project works, is because you have a developer that can build above two parcels. So Rethink is asking that the city council consider doing outdoor dining behind that area. At this time, CTG has not provided their support yet because specific plans haven't been drawn up, so it's not clear exactly what the area is. As part, since it's not part of the DDA, the city council could also direct staff to coordinate use of the space through an easement or through a modification of the outdoor dining program contingent on CTG's approval. I'm jumping around here, I'm trying to get you done on this report, I had it smoother before. Okay. And lastly, the lease of construction parking for the project. Again, this is not in the DDA, but this is just something that the developer wanted to sort of reserve, which is they're requesting thirty vehicles, daily vehicle parking in our parking structure. They're willing to pay market rent for that, and it would be over the course of a seventeenth month construction period. So again, we could add that to the DDA, or we could do a separate parking agreement, or they can just coordinate directly with our parking manager. So Rethink's indicated that if they're not able to amend the DDA with the requested modifications, the project would become infeasible to construct. If the project were to become infeasible, the city would need to proceed with the provisions outlined in the DDA relative to project termination and property transfer. Rethink's here tonight, and they and staff are available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do we have any comments?
Yes, we have five speakers sign up to speak.
Okay, great. Do we, let's have colleagues ask any questions you have based off of the staff report, then we'll hear comments.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to ask, the, the outdoor dining space would be directly connected with the retail space and used by the retail space, or no, that's separate?
The retail space is actually located on Washington Boulevard, near the entrance of Center Theater Group. The outdoor dining would be on the backside, and it wouldn't be directly connected. There would still be a pathway for access to be able to, you know, have access to the trash enclosure. So it would be a little bit of an interrupted pathway, but it would be adjacent to the back of the Kurt Douglas Theater.
And, and just curious, Rethink would use that in what exact way?
It's a great question. So Rethink wants to use that space to make it competitive and attractive for their existing tenant, so like, for instance, the Cafe Vida site, to be able to expand and offer more outdoor dining. So it's a competitive advantage proposal.
For Cafe, yeah, so it's for, would be used for Cafe Vida currently?
Or any future tenant, but hopefully Cafe Vida, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman McMoRan? Okay. Councilwoman. Yeah, I'll wait until comments. So let's hear public comments.
Okay, our public speakers. We'll start with Megan Pressman, followed by Alicia Hyde, followed by Edward Ring, Amy Forbes, and Greg Wrights. So Megan Pressman has been patiently waiting online all this time. Megan, I've, I've unlocked you, can unmute yourself? Go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and City Council. I am Megan Pressman. I'm the Managing Director and CEO of Center Theater Group, which has been operating and managing the Kirk Douglas Theater for twenty-one years now. I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak in support of the project, which we do hope is able to proceed, and I want to acknowledge Elaine Garrity Warner and her team for their hard work, support, and guidance for the many years we've been helping pursue this project. On behalf of the Board of Directors and Leadership of Center Theater Group, we carry the responsibility to ensure that the Kirk Douglas is able to maintain robust theater operations at the conclusion of this project. We are respectfully requesting that the city council make sure that any DDA amendment reflects the following three items. One, ensuring that the release of the art space requirement be contingent on the Kirk Douglas Theater HVAC relocation to the public right-of-way. Two, to direct the city manager to issue whatever appropriate permits or easements to put the Kirk Douglas Theater HVAC in that right-of-way. And three, that the amendment include a requirement that the sidewalk dining authorization is contingent on Center Theater Group's approval, which is consistent with our existing easement. All of this is critical to the Kirk Douglas Theater operations, which we hope to robustly continue in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Then our next speaker is Alicia Hyde, followed by Edward Ring.
I was asked to speak tonight because they knew I would be here. So I was asked by the Board of the Culver Arts Foundation to speak tonight to remind City Council that Culver, that Culver City is arts facilities poor, with little in the way of city-controlled performing spaces, art-making spaces, studio spaces, exhibition spaces. And even if CTG does not need the arts facility proposed in this project, there are many artists and many arts organizations in this city who could benefit from art spaces. And we would hope that the arts component should remain and be added to other development projects, especially those utilizing city property. Thank you.
Mayor, may I make a clarifying point? The property was disposed to Rethink, so that's actually not city property anymore. It's part of their, but it is managed by the developer and disposition agreement to have an arts-related space.
Okay, our next speaker is Edward Ring, who is online. Edward, I've unlocked you, can unmute yourself? Go ahead.
I think I managed to do that successfully. Thank you for allowing me to make this comment. First of all, I just wanted to tell everybody and remind everybody that "Guac" is playing right now at the KDT, two great reviews, and artistically, it's a phenomenal success. We, we also are very, very much in support of Rethink's project. Having a sort of three-party DDA makes navigating it with respect to the sequencing of the development and the entitlements makes it a little bit more challenging than maybe other projects. So we would actually request that, that any modification of the DDA meets our approval in, in a, you know, in a different setting with, with attorneys and whatnot. And just to reiterate our gratitude for, at least thus far, allowing the HVAC to be relocated to the public right-of-way, that not only helps facilitate the Rethink development, but it makes a lot more sense, given that, that we at CTG really do need the, this space as it's currently configured, and moving the HVAC actually allows us to maintain the same, largely the same amount of space, so that theater operations can continue. Thank you.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Amy Forbes. Amy, I've unlocked you, you can speak. Unmute yourself.
Okay, I think I've unmuted myself. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Amy Forbes, and I'm the President of the Board of Directors of Center Theater Group. And I actually negotiated the lease with the city some twenty-three years ago when we transformed a movie theater into a live theater, and it's been obviously an enormous success. But one of the quirks is that as a movie theater, it has no load-in area, it has no craft area and other things that you would find in a regular theater. And that's what's creating our need to figure out where to put the HVAC. Our HVAC, our transformers, our craft areas, our loading areas are all located on the property that Rethink is going to build its project on. And we, over three years ago, negotiated how we would end up being able to cohabitate. But as, as, over the three years, as the project has been designed, it became apparent there's not enough space in that area, which is why we're asking you to let us move our HVAC system into the right-of-way. Otherwise, we won't have enough space left to be able to do what we need to do and still have the Rethink project accommodated. So it is, it is totally mission-critical for us. And similarly with the dining, it could constrain our ability to load heavy trucks in and create a safety and operational impact. So those are two things that are critical, and otherwise, we're fully supportive of the, the request. We just want to be included in the DDA so no one loses track of what our needs are going forward with the construction. Thank you.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Greg Wrights. Is he here?
Good evening, City Council. Thank you all for being here this late. We just sat through eighteen innings of City Council while the Dodgers are playing eighteen innings of baseball, and I feel like we're in the eighteenth inning of this project, three years in, and hopefully we get a walk-off here tonight. We have been through one of the most complex projects we've ever undertaken. It's a small project with lots of moving pieces, and this is the last one, and hopefully this, this gets it done. So we're here to answer questions and, and explain our, our need here, but this is, this is what we need in order to make this project happen, and we're excited to build it. We're ready to submit our plans for plan check and, and get the project done. So any questions that come up? I'm Greg Wrights, and Steve Edwards, my partner, is sitting in the back row, and we're happy to answer them. Thank you.
That's the end of our speakers.
Okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate the, the baseball metaphor. See if we can get you to walk off. I do have, I'm going to speak first on this because I have, I personally, and I know community members regarding developments citywide, not, not just the Rethink project, are tired of kind of like blight just sitting there. We see it all over the city. A project started, and there's fencing up, whatever, and we've got the, the old Dennis House that's probably got all kinds of dangerous elements to its existence, fire risk, you know, whatever it might be. I know this would not be a preferred direction, but I, I think the community would really appreciate it, if at all possible, assuming the, the modified DDA is approved, if, say, giving one-year timeframe to demo that house and put it in a, in a existence where the community could use it until you're ready to build. So that's an open space where we can put tables and chairs there, you know, whatever it might be. I know it's a little more complicated than that on the city's side, but I'm just wondering if that is something that you would be open to. I think the community would really appreciate it. Yeah, thanks, Greg. Let's see if you can come up with another analogy.
I like, I like that idea. And, I mean, hopefully we go right into building the project. That would be the goal. But I understand, we don't, we don't like, we worry about that building being there also, so we'd like to get it, get rid of it as quickly as possible. So if there's an interim period between now and when we're going to build, happy to get it out of there and, and make some use of the, the land. Yeah.
Okay, great. All right, thank you. I appreciate that. Councilman Fish, do you have any questions? Comments?
Thanks, Mayor, yeah. So if I'm understanding this correctly, CTG is saying we, we're not ready to say yes to the outdoor dining yet, we want to see the final plans, and is that, is that contingent? Is that something that, for Rethink, is acceptable?
Yeah, this is Steve Edwards. That's acceptable. We got to figure, we don't want it to impede on their ability to load in and load out, and the restaurateur wouldn't want it either. So we'll see if it can work. We just want the option to look at it for Cafe Vida and potential future tenants.
Thank you. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Councilwoman McMoRan?
Thank you. Appreciate that this, thank you, Ms. Warner, and for your quick overview of where we are. Appreciate all the folks who've held on. I thought we were getting out early tonight. I would guess wrong. Overall, I mean, I think these are relatively reasonable requests. I do, just as a principle, I struggle with privatizing, you know, public space. That's always been something that, you know, if, you know, but, but also appreciated our outdoor dining moment when we had that. So, you know, and I understand that it is a function of space and trying to accommodate the to accommodate these plans that have been in the works for some time. So, you know, I know folks are working hard, and we're trying to find a solution here, so I want to make sure that the city is being a good partner and supporting this project is being done. And I do really appreciate, I was nervous that there was going to be a walkback of the affordable housing commitment, so I'm glad that that is not what happened, and we're still honoring that as we move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Rivera?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to save a whole lot of time, I agree with Ms. Pressman in terms of the items that need to be solidified in this moving forward. That building, I don't think can get torn down fast enough. I know it's, and I've been through that walkway, it's sort of a haven for rats. I mean, it's like, they're abundant there, so. And then thank you so much for your willingness to at least entertain the mayor's suggestion about, you know, creating maybe an open space if there is sort of a gap in tearing down and developing. So, yeah, I'm happy to move forward with it as written in here. Yep, that's it. Thanks, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the staff report, thanks for the public comments, thanks to CTG. You're an important community partner in our city. I'm sad that the prior iterations of the project, of this project didn't work out, but, and I'd like to see this succeed. I'm very sympathetic to the loss of the art space, but again, I would like to see this space and project succeed, so these are very reasonable requests, and I'm open to them with the inclusion of the mayor's suggestion. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so, again, thank you to everyone from Rethink and also from CTG. I concur with the Vice Mayor that you are an incredibly valued partner in the city, providing performing arts that, you know, a lot of cities would be very jealous of. So what I'm hearing from everyone is that we're okay to go forward with the modifications to the DDA as recommended and per approval of CTG on the undecided portions. They need to have the HVAC moved. The dining needs to be reviewed by them. Anything else that Megan said there? And then, if we can add to this, you know, if construction hasn't started a year from execution of the DDA, there needs to be the demo of the building and made into an open space, and then the city can deal with, you know, how we activate that if we want to.
I just wanted to let the council know that in the current schedule of performance, their next milestone is submit, to submit their evidence of financing and construction loan in May, which would then yield a potential construction date of June. So right now, that's their existing schedule of performance.
Right.
And then the two other items, the outdoor dining and the parking, as I mentioned before, those are actually not currently in the DDA. Would you like us to put that in there?
Yes, please. I don't, I didn't see any, but the outdoor dining is per review by CTG, and I don't think anyone had any problem with market rate parking in our parking structure. So yes, please. I submit a motion.
We also need the motions to approve the amendment consistent with the council's direction and authorize city attorney to review, prepare, and city manager to execute.
Separate motion or including?
You can do it all in one, but I just want to make sure those were included.
Yes, right. So approve, approve an amendment to the DDA consistent with city council's direction, authorize city attorney to review, prepare the necessary documents, and authorize city manager to execute such documents on behalf of the city.
I have a motion by Mayor O'Brien, a second from Councilmember Vera, to approve the motion as stated by the mayor. You may begin voting. Thank you. That motion passes unanimously.
All right, great. Thank you. Thank you, Elaine. Do we have any comments?
There are none.
Okay. Do we have any last comments from my colleagues? Counselor Fish?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, two, sorry, two and a question. The first is just about the single stair ordinance that we passed is maybe coming to the California Building Standards Commission on the, I think it's the 17th. I've shared the date with staff of December, and we were contacted by some groups that, some groups that advocated for our ordinance, such as Abundant Housing Los Angeles, who said that the commission, it would be good for the commission to hear from the council as to why this is a political priority for the council. So my request is just for three nodding heads to send a letter from this council advocating for our ordinance that was already passed, 5-0, just sharing the local need for our single stair ordinance and why we passed it, and the same exact letter being sent to the state, the State Fire Marshal's Working Group. So I'm just seeking nodding heads for those, that letter to be sent to those two groups. Okay, great. And I think, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Is that something that you would want to work on with the, we had talked about possibility of working on it with the Housing and Homelessness Subcommittee?
I, I mean, city attorney, you tell me, I don't feel that, because we provided like that sample, and Shelley's really good at, you know, writing those letters, I don't feel that it needs to come back.
Okay.
Since it's something that's already passed the council.
Yeah, as long as it reflects, you know, what we passed.
I think that's fine, yes. I think that's fine.
Thank you. And I provided a sample that, from Santa Monica, that passed a similar letter, or that sent a similar letter. And the second is just, there's a, a bill that was just passed that was signed by Governor Newsom last month, SB 720, that reforms the red light camera program and fixes some of the challenges of the red light camera program. For example, the tickets being extraordinarily expensive, very difficult to have, get people to pay them, and the charges are criminal instead of civil, and this law that was just signed, that was just signed, allows cities to opt into a new reformed program. And so I was just seeking three nodding heads to remand that to the Mobility Subcommittee. We can talk about that more in the committee, but it would just be exploring that law, using it, and I've contacted our CCPD, who runs the program, and asked for his input on it as well. Okay. Thanks, thank you. And then just finally, it's just a quick question to staff is, do we have an idea of when the legislative platform is coming back for review? Maybe that's John, is that it? Or John or Heather, maybe?
I believe it's coming November 10.
Okay.
I think. It got moved off of this agenda, and I, is that not correct, Mayor?
That would be an action item, right?
Yeah, I believe so.
I think Assistant City Manager Wolfburg said it could be a consent item, and...
Oh, she did. That's correct. She did.
Yeah, I'm not seeing it on November 10. It's a full one.
On consent, either, you're not saying?
Oh, consent.
We can, it's just a question, so if you, if it's something that you can find out, I was just curious when it's, when it's coming back, but I don't have any action on that. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes. I'm wondering if I can get three nodding heads for a presentation and exploration of using the services thrown. It's an accessible portable bathroom. There's one currently at Ivy Station.
For purposes of record, we've kind of gotten away for putting it on the record who did the nodding heads this evening, so let's make, let's try and get it for this one at least.
I'm seeing all nodding heads on this one.
And then also, and if this aligns with our legislative platform, but support for AB 736, it's a bill by Assembly Member Buffy Wicks in support of Affordable Housing Bond of 2026. So it'd be dedicated funding for student housing at California's public colleges and universities, so since we have people who go to universities around us who live in.
Yes.
Seeing all nodding heads. Yeah, all nodding heads, and we'll check the legislative platform, policy and platform, and if it's not in there, I'll come back. If it is, then we won't need to bring it back.
Great. That's it, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, city attorney.
Okay, thank you. I don't have anything else to add. I would like to read the obituary for Margot Green, and then is there any other notes that either Counselor Rivera or Vice Mayor Puza would like to add in their memory?
Sure.
You can go first.
None for me, just what I stated in my initial comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
As I said, Melanie Winter, she was the Executive Director of The River Project and Friends of Los Angeles River. She attended a recent meeting with the Sustainability Subcommittee with Councilmember McMorn and I, and she really championed efforts to embrace nature along the river, saying that allowing space for a meandering waterway lined with riparian forests would recharge, help recharge groundwater, reduce flood risk, and allow a green oasis to flourish in the heart of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I'm going to read the obituary for Margot Green. This is our city clerk, Jeremy Bocino's mother, who passed away on Saturday at the age of 91. She's a Broadway dancer, designer, entrepreneur, with a flair for renovate, reinvention. She died at 91. Margot Green, whose career spanned from the Broadway stage to fashion, antiques, interior design, and real estate, died on October 25, 2025, in Palm Desert, California. A former longtime resident of Roslyn Heights, New York, she was 91. Gifted, she entered the university at 16, but if anyone tried to define her, she would reinvent herself, often just to prove them wrong. With no training, she taught herself to sing and dance, and at 18 was on Broadway in the original productions of Wish You Were Here, followed by Can Can and Damn Yankees. This penchant for self-reinvention and her constant belief in possibilities would follow her throughout her life, led by her motto, "Margot Makes It Happen." After conquering the stage, she turned to design, opening a clothing boutique that evolved into a small streetwear line for dancers, an early forerunner of activewear. At 21, she married Frank Green, also a Broadway star. The pair relocated a decade later to the suburbs of Roslyn Heights, where Margot opened her antique store, sold real estate, and became an interior designer. In 1998, the Greens relocated to Indian Wells, California, where once again, Margot turned her sights to real estate. Throughout her life, Margot was known for her boundless curiosity and energy, her enthusiasm for new ideas, and her belief that the thoughtful, that thoughtful conversation and creativity could make the world a better place. She's survived by her twin daughters Pamela Leary and Jeremy Bocino, and their husbands, Ian Leary and Frank Bocino, and countless extended family and friends. Margot Green will be remembered as a talented, dynamic woman, whose imagination and drive helped her indeed make it happen. In honor of Margot, please consider donations to Breast Cancer Research Foundation, American Cancer Society, macular degeneration research, Braille Institute, Rheumatology Research Foundation, hospice, or a charity of your choice. Thank you. And I think we have motion and second to adjourn.
Thank you. I see a motion from Vice Mayor Puza, a second from Councilmember McMorn, to adjourn in the memories of Margot Green, Deputy Andrew Nunez, and Melanie Winter. You may begin voting. That motion passes unanimously. The time is 12:28 a.m., and we are adjourned.
Thank you.